I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, September 12th, 2006, to order. We will begin with the flag salute.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our Spanish translation, I believe we have Ms. Vivian Rodriguez, who will be translating this evening, and she will come forward and introduce herself.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete en español, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Rodriguez. Okay. I also would like to point out that we have headsets for the hearing impaired. It's listed on our slide so that anyone who is hearing impaired can read it, and if you can't hear my announcement, if you do need the technology, please let us know. Also, you will notice a sign there, "Please silence all cell phones." So if you have forgotten to do that, this is your friendly reminder. And then also on our website, you will see that Channel 18 generally broadcasts regular board meetings on Saturdays following the meeting, beginning at 5:00 p.m. However, they occasionally do change the timing, so to confirm Channel 18's program schedule, you can find it at the website listed there, www.citytv18.com. We have student representative presentations that take place usually at the first meeting of each month. Our first student representative won't be available until September 26th, however, due to the beginning of school. So we will return to our usual first meeting of the month after that. Thank you. Okay. Announcement from closed session. I do want to report out one brief discussion item that Ms. Malakoff raised, the question of why our unaudited actuals for the budget had not been available for this evening, and questioned whether board members had made requests or demands of Mr. Wolf's time that kept him from getting the material prepared. And the response to that was no, that there were other demands, and it is primarily a factor of being short-staffed with the loss of Ms. Mary Stark. So that came out of the closed session. There were no other items to report out from the closed session. So that brings us to the acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Second. Thank you very much. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries, five zero. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. Dr. Sarvis will bring us up to date on these.
Good. Well, in the category of how I spent my summer vacation, I want to introduce to you a great student, Janie Thompson. Janie, come on up here. Summer vacation is a special time, and we invited San Marcos High School senior Janie Thompson to be here tonight to tell us about -- here, why don't you come around this side. Tell us about a unique project that she was a part of this summer. Welcome, Janie.
Good evening. My name is Janie Thompson, and I participated with the Santa Barbara Museum of Art's Teen Summer Mural Project this year. Each year, the mural corresponds with an exhibit on display at the museum, and because the upcoming exhibit is retrospective on Mexican artist Rufino Tamayo, our mural pays tribute to him and is thus titled "Homage to Rufino Tamayo." Each year, there is a master artist who sort of steers the mural, and his name is Rafael Perez de la Cabada, who teaches art at Santa Barbara City College and whose work is currently on display as part of the series of the State Street artwork. And I worked with five other students, all of whom graduated from Dos Pueblos High School, and they are Andrea Gaines, who currently attends Brown University, Kenneth Roberts, who attends UC Berkeley, Lauren May, who attends Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, Adrian Contreras, who attends Otis School of Art and Design, and Jaime Guerrero, who is a second-year student at Santa Barbara City College. Also helping us were two local guest artists, Heather Mattoon and Matt Woodford. And every day from 9:00 until 3:00, Monday through Friday, we would meet at the Ridley Tree Education Center and work on the mural. For the first two weeks of the project, we researched the artwork of Rufino Tamayo and interpreted his art into a series of sketches in anticipation of the mural. And some of them are right here, after having looked at the artwork of Rufino Tamayo. And the fact that this was to be an homage to Tamayo presented an interesting challenge, for we had to find a way to express our own artwork through that of Tamayo. And there would be a roll of butcher paper, and what we would do is we would cut out a long strip, and at first, we would just create -- we would just spend time and draw what we felt like drawing without even looking at Tamayo's artwork, as a way to sort of bond as a team, as we are right there. And the mural itself is eight feet by 24 feet, and it is divided up into six panels, so it's about the size of a billboard. And once we had come up with a design for the mural, we would find ways of making it so that not everyone had one particular area they would work on. We wanted to unify it as a team, and how we would accomplish this was we would assign each other certain tasks that would be done, and we would always have someone different doing a particular area at all times, and often we would rotate it just to keep it everyone's mural, rather than, you know, I did this part or that part, as we're doing And these are three panels of the mural, so it's about half of the mural. And it's abstract, as you can see. And one of the puzzles of working with abstract artwork is, of course, just playing with colors and shapes, rather than actual figures, and trying to make it look realistic or that. Just, I feel it's more creative, and oftentimes, we would just step back and look at it again and think, how would this look if this color were included, or how about these shapes? So we would always find some way to incorporate our own perspective on -- and try to include enough Tamayo to make it an homage. And that's a group portrait. And the second from the right in the top row is our master artist, Rafael. And Matt and Heather are on the right, and they were the guest artists. And, yeah. One of the -- another sort of challenge that we encountered when interpreting Tamayo's artwork into our own mural was, what sort of message do we want to send? Rufino Tamayo himself was very different from other Mexican muralists, because unlike muralists like David Alfaro Sicqueros or Diego Rivera, he sought no sort of political message or any other strong message in his artwork. In a way, he just created art for art's sake. And with this, we looked at Tamayo's artwork extensively, and we sort of come up with a way of interpreting his artwork in that we found in each of his paintings to sort of represent a universal personal experience. Most of his paintings included just, you know, just moments of, you know, you find two people, and, you know, they're happy, or they're angry, or sad. And it would be these sort of moments that we felt were important to express. And so that was pretty much the overall theme alongside Tamayo's artwork, was to include some way to express what we called the universal personal experience. And are there any questions?
Tell us, Janie. When's the big unveiling?
Oh, the unveiling ceremony is this Saturday, and I would like to extend an invitation to the opening of the exhibit, as well as the mural. It's at 4:00, and it's on the 16th, which is Mexican Independence Day. So we kept that in mind when we came up with the unveiling date.
Where is that located, again?
It's located at the museum of art, and the mural itself is in the back entrance of the museum.
By the library.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Janie, for your presentation, and also for the work that you and your fellow students did. This is very interesting and exciting, and I look forward to the opening day. I will definitely go and see this. It is exciting. So thank you very much, and our best wishes to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. I have one other introduction tonight. I'd like to introduce Sela Viscara. Sela, would you please come up? Delta Capa Gamma Society International promotes professional and personal growth of women educators and excellence in education. Recently, Selma Viscara, a 27-year kindergarten teacher at Adams Elementary School, received Delta Capa Gamma's Distinguished Career Professional Service Award for her creative, exemplary teaching techniques integrating reading and music. Integrating open court with the techniques of Orf Schulwerk music. You know Carl Orf, right? Carmina Barana? Would you like me to sing it? The Orf Schulwerk music techniques --
Is that Latin?
Yes. I thought it was German. Sela uses songs, pictures, and objects to teach beginning sounds, rhyming words, and vocabulary to her students. There are eight units that must be covered in kindergarten, and Sela uses songs with movement accompaniments for each unit. Her teaching reflects her personal philosophy, "Life is a song." Sela is committed to engaging Hispanic and other English-language acquisition parents into their children's educational experience in the following ways. She spearheaded the ELAC at -- ELAC is the English Learner Advisory Council at Adams Elementary School, and developed programs to engage these families in student learning strategies. There's more. She established a homework center for families and created a plan that incorporates collaboration between school and community through onsite meetings, parent seminars, and sessions in English language development for adults and children. She has worked diligently to install confidence in parents, encouraging them to become active in the classrooms, parent-teacher events, and volunteers on campus. She assists Hispanic parents in their role as partners in their child's education by writing directions in Spanish on daily worksheets, translating information during parent-teacher meetings, and serving as a translator for school communications to parents. Sela, thank you for your hard work, and congratulations on your award.
Thank you. I just want to say I've enjoyed every day that I've gone to work since I started way back in 1977. It was a pleasure growing up here in this community, and it's a pleasure serving our parents and students. And the joy that I have is working with my colleagues and collaborating with all of the staff and personnel at our school, because it takes all of us to make the children rise to the occasion and meet all of our objectives and enjoy school. Thank you so much.
And on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate you on your award, and also to thank you for your many years of service to our students. It is a true teacher who has a genuine calling to be in the classroom with students, and we can tell by the numerous, the long list of accolades that Dr. Sarvis read, but also by just your devotion to your classroom, that you have that calling. So thank you. We appreciate it very much.
Madam Chair, I think a number of Adams colleagues and the Adams principals also here to help celebrate this occasion, and I wonder if they would also like to stand up, as was pointed out, it takes the whole team.
Thank you. We appreciate your support and your effort and your work in the classroom as well.
Shall I continue with the superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Well, we're off to quite a start this year. Enrollment. On Friday, the ninth day of the new school year, the seat count in the secondary district was 9,825. That's 200 students less than this time last year, and on the same day in the elementary district, 5,093 students were in attendance, and that's 275 less than the previous year. These numbers do not include verified absences, and they will not be official until our official October Seabeds Day. So this is not our official enrollment, but we do believe enrollment is down, as we anticipated again this year. Possible threat at San Marcos High School. During the first week of the school year, San Marcos High School Principal Craig Morgan and his administrative team demonstrated staff readiness, skills, experience, and training when they responded to the possibility of a threat. The Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department, school resource officer, and investigators are to be commended for their swift action and professional handling of the situation. Also, our facilities and special projects departments worked closely with Principal Morgan in meeting the school needs. I have to commend Mr. Morgan. You know, we plan for emergencies all the time. This could have been an emergency. It was not. But we acted as if it might be, and I was pleased with the quick response. The death of a student at Lachalina Junior High. During the second week of school, Lachalina Junior High School and the local community were terribly saddened by the tragic death of seventh-year student Jake Boycel. Jake was bicycling to school last Wednesday morning when he was hit by a car. Our schools and district staff immediately banded together. I would like to thank our school psychologists, counselors, and administrators for their excellent work last week. We had triage teams at all of the schools in that area. This tragedy touched several of the schools, and our students needed help. Our staff mobilized and was ready to serve at Lachalina San Marcos, Galleta Valley, and Dos Pueblos. Also, Dos Pueblos sent a school psychologist to Foothill Elementary School in Galleta Union School District, where Jake had attended grades K through 6. We have extended our condolences to the Boycel family. There will be a remembrance ceremony scheduled for this Friday at 4:00 p.m. on the lawn in front of Lachalina Campus, near the library. A butterfly release will be part of the ceremony. At this moment, a town hall meeting is taking place at Lachalina, where representatives of the city and county public works and city police are meeting with the community regarding the accident. That was scheduled independent of the board meeting. I know we would have wanted to attend as well. Back-to-school night took place last week at eight elementary schools, and I understand some of the board members were in attendance at those. I went to a couple myself. Carol Navarez was delighted to have Annette Cordero at Franklin's back-to-school night. She and the other principals welcomed visits from other board members as well. The back-to-school meetings continue through the end of September. The schedule can be accessed from the homepage on the district's website, and as I recall, I think we have four tomorrow night, four Thursday night. They just keep coming. Save a Life Training in the Santa Barbara School Districts. At 10:30 a.m. at Monroe Elementary School on Friday, September 15, we will be joined by several community leaders to announce Save a Life Foundation's Emergency Preparedness Training Pilot Program that will take place in our schools over the 2006-07 school year. Santa Barbara firefighters -- excuse me, firefighters, my buddies will give me a bad time for that one, will teach our fourth and fifth graders appropriate basic life-supporting first aid skills, including CPR and the Heimlich maneuver. This program is free to the district and is funded by the Save a Life Foundation, a national nonprofit and national affiliate of the Department of Homeland Security through the Citizen Core Program. I welcome the board to join us at the Friday kickoff at Monroe. The Board Brief. From September 1, 2006, generally, on the second and fourth Friday of each month, my office issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on district and school matters. A copy is on display in the reception area, or can be made available through the superintendent's office. I'd like to call the board's attention to two items, actually only one item in the Board Brief, which was a special board brief on September 1, and that was that we gave you a list of the 17 organizations that have met the insurance requirement to provide independent study, PE. Galleta Valley Cottage Hospitals Baby Fair takes place this Saturday. This is our Day of Caring in the community, so after we go out and paint and pull weeds, we'll be down to the hospital, meeting parents with new babies, and prospective babies even. For the fourth year in a row, we will have a booth at this event to provide prospective parents with an opportunity to gather information, talk directly with elementary principals, child development, and other staff. And that concludes the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. It sounds like we have a very full weekend ahead of us. Okay. Is there any correspondence that board members would like to bring forward at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public comments. I believe we have six members of the public who have submitted speaker cards. This is the time at which the members of the public are invited to speak on topics that are not on the agenda tonight, but are in the jurisdiction of -- under the jurisdiction of the board. So if there's anybody else who has not submitted a speaker card, this would be the time to do so. Okay. I see some more coming up here. Kenneth Locke, followed by Brian Tangue. Kenneth Locke. Again, a reminder that you have three minutes. There is a light on the podium that turns red when your time is expired, and I will also give you a 30-second heads-up to let you know when you're getting close.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the county supervisors today, did a public comment, spoke before the city, public comment, and also an agenda item. I'm bringing information to this community via through these public comments. I mentioned before the county, the basis of the meaning of art in relation to a meaning of a relationship with art, in relation to the meaning of a education in relation to art. I think I've mentioned this stuff to you before. I mentioned the whole concept of the avant-garde, and I'm claiming to be the last of them, who got to the, kind of, the end of art, to its meaning. What I represent kind of eternally is a source of complete knowledge in relation to that complete history, which I'm sorry to say is being ignored. And I'm showing the basis of what a master is in relation to a teacher, education. I'm here to bring us into a kind of another age, Renaissance, in relation to education even. The basis of a master's degree in relation to art will be based on the teacher bringing their students so that they can graduate art. We're going to understand art in this next age as a means to an end, and it's relative to our service that we provide to the collective good. It's relative to our souls. We're going to understand, once we graduate, then we prove ourselves to be worthy, to create objects which are -- that we can say that is of service, and that integrate the arts and sciences. So in relation to the age that we're -- the time we're in right now, I'm here to say that it's a little overdue. We should embrace this idea that I'm bringing to the table. I mentioned before the city, the concept of the meaning of art and tennis. And right now, your education you're providing to this student body is relatively incomplete knowledge, eternally speaking. And in relation to teachers right now --
30 seconds.
-- they're providing incomplete knowledge to the basis of a meaningless relationship. The next age will be based on meaningful knowledge, based on completion. This will ultimately bring us into the concept of the eternal. I'll be writing more about this on my website, and I'll make that information available to you. I'll be speaking before you again, as well as the county and the city. I'm hoping somewhere along the line that my work takes traction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Brian Tangue, followed by Tierra Dodson.
Brian Tangue, CSEA president. I'm here to speak to you about contract negotiations, and specifically, our health insurance crisis. I assure you that these remarks in no way violate the collective bargaining process. Unions and employees have explicit rights to communicate with school boards that are protected under a variety of federal and state statutes, including the Education Code and the Brown Act. If there's an administrator present who feels I'm speaking out of school, let them research the applicable case law. The deadline for open enrollment for health insurance is three days away. Most of my members are still brooding over their enrollment forms, trying to make an informed decision for themselves and their families, but an informed decision is impossible. Employees don't have enough time or enough information. All they can do is roll the dice. All they can do is choose a plan and hope the ultimate cost is affordable. How unfair is that? Despite seven negotiating sessions, nobody can even guess how the 146% increase will be shared, or if it will be shared at all. Time after time, the financial information hasn't been available. In less dysfunctional school districts, entire collective bargaining agreements are settled in fewer than seven sessions. A number of employees have told me they're dropping our insurance plan. If enough others follow suit, it's entirely possible that Blue Shield will rerate our plan, driving the cost even higher. Employees are upset about being placed in this absurd situation. They're tired of excuses about the budget, tired of delay, tired of uncertainty. More to the point, employees have the impression that this board and district leadership doesn't understand the seriousness of this issue, or worse, doesn't care. Can you expect them to fear -- Can you expect them to feel any other way when they reflect on your fifth board-focused goal, which reads, and I quote, "The district will recruit, train, promote, and retain a highly qualified staff comprising an outstanding team of professionals," unquote. In light of what they're facing today, it's like a slap in the face. If asking hundreds of employees to make a critical health and financial decision for themselves and their families in the dark and under the gun is your idea of sound retention policy, we are in real trouble. As I said to you two weeks ago, solving this problem should be a high priority. The superintendent and his team seem unwilling or incapable of making it so. It's time for you to prove that your words have meaning. It's time for you, board members, to move from the valley of rhetoric to the mountaintop of bold action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tangue.
Tiare Dodson followed by Karen Hess.
Good evening. My name is Tiare Dodson, and I've been teaching at Lacumbra in the science department for the past nine years. When I started at Lacumbra, we were a very thriving school, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade program. We had 950 students. The 950 students worked well at Lacumbra. We had the facilities to do so, having 950, because we were able to be on a program where all students were moving around. The upstairs and the downstairs floors were used. Our sixth-grade science classrooms were upstairs. There were classes that were downstairs. I'm here to express some concern about moving a K-6 program to Lacumbra where there would be programs that wouldn't be able to move, like kindergarten through third grade. We've been very successful in having the academy with us this past year as the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade because they're able to use our old sixth-grade wing so that they have their own space, they're isolated, they can use our library, they can take advantage of our great programs like music and theater. But I'm concerned for them. I could understand if they have a child that's in the K-3 program here that they'd be unhappy, having to drop one off in the morning and then take their other student over to our school. We're happy to have them. I think they've been a great program here at our school, but I am concerned with the thought of moving all of our junior high students, 500 of them, upstairs to the upstairs wing. I teach up there. There aren't enough classrooms for all of us to house 500 students. And if we put some of us downstairs, then we're going to have the problem of having a kindergarten class and having junior high students going up and down a ramp. And I'll tell you, it's not quiet during that 45-minute, you know, right after a class is done in the passing period. So I'm concerned for them, as I am concerned for us. We have a thriving program, and as I've heard that the numbers are declining, I'm pleased to say that our numbers at Lacumbra have gone up. We've done a great job trying to recruit students. We've been successful in that. We've done a great job retaining the students that we've started with there. I feel that we're on the right track at Lacumbra. I just would hope that the board might consider a few other options that would be more fair to the academy also. Perhaps finding an elementary school campus where they would be more comfortable. They already have facilities set up for them there. They already have the right type of textbooks. They already have the right type of bathrooms and play equipment. I just think that perhaps a few other options need to be investigated, perhaps a more open dialogue with more of our teachers-
Thirty seconds.
Perhaps with more of our community. We are very happy to have the academy there, and I feel like we've been a good host to them, that, you know, the way that it's working out now has been fine, but I think that we all have a concern that just we haven't been able to openly talk about this very important decision. And so I hope that the board might wait on making a choice about moving a K-6 program on a secondary campus until all the facts are laid out and we know exactly what that's going to impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodson.
Karen Hess followed by Laura Baker.
I just want to say thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight to make some comments to you. Dr. Sarvas and board members, and also the two of you that I don't know. Not only am I chief job steward, but that's not the reason that I'm here tonight. I'm here because as an instructional aide in special education, many of our members are 75% time, and I believe I had mentioned that a couple of weeks ago. I've already spoken to at least four of our instructional aides who say that they are not going to be able to afford to work for the school district. We are professionals. I have a bachelor's degree, and most of them do too, but we are being underpaid, and the cost of the premium on our new healthcare plan is going to severely affect our budgets. Mine will go from $89 to $238, which is a big crunch, which means that I will have to look for part-time work outside of the school district. But I'm asking you to really look at this fairly, Dr. Sarvas, because you sent us a letter at the beginning of the school year saying that you had goals. Your employees should be very important to you, as well as your students, and I'm asking you to try to find a way around this situation because it is crucial. Many of us will leave. You will have to look for other employees, and you may not be successful in doing so right away. I understand that the enrollments are down, but we just really need to come up with a better plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hess.
Laura Baker followed by Sebastian.
Thank you. My name is Laura Baker, and I am deeply concerned about the processes occurred thus far regarding the K-6 academy move to Lacumbra. First issue I have is that I'm requesting that the board discuss in public view why the options for the academy to move to Cleveland Elementary and any other elementary site were not enumerated in the facilities master plan. I don't understand. I am requesting that the board direct Pat Salie and Associates to flesh out, using your words, "all possibilities of the K-6 academy, K-6 elementary school being placed at an elementary site prior to taking any further action." I feel it would be fiscally irresponsible for the board to take any further action toward placement at a secondary site without thoroughly researching the feasibility of any elementary site. Whether at Cleveland or wherever it is, it seems to me you need to look at all of those options before you think about putting them at a secondary site. My other issue is the notification of this workshop and what happened with the West Side and not having West Side input before you directed this firm to flesh out the budget, which means you're really seriously thinking about this option. You don't go to that point without that seriousness. And I'm concerned that on July 11th was the first time the plan went to the public. That was during our summer. The academy in Cleveland were in session. They had a chance to review it, look at it, discuss it. We didn't know about it basically until the week before school started, the Friday before school started. One of our staff members said, "Hey, the academy had a PTA meeting last night, and they talked about having their parents and staff go and talk at this meeting next week about moving the K-6 to Lacumbra. What's going on?" And our principal said, "I've been told not to talk about this." She was directed not to speak about the issue because she's the principal of the 46th Academy and Lacumbra. And I find it very interesting that I sat here at 4:45 prior to the workshop on the 29th in that room, and I watched Ms. Elzina, the principal of the K-3 academy, basically hosting her own little party and slapping people on the, or not slapping, but hugging people, patting them on the back, thanking them for coming. "Oh, you got my flyer. So glad you could make it. Go fill out your speaker card." Yet our principal was told to stay out of it, and they were allowed at their PTA meeting the Thursday prior to public notification of that meeting to talk about it and plan for that meeting. They did not go on the district website until Monday, the 28th. I see it.
Thirty seconds.
So I'm concerned about that, and I would like to know if the board was aware of the fact that she was told to stay out of it. It just feels wrong. It feels that we basically are being gagged almost. It's how it's feeling. That's the concept here, the feeling the West Side has. I just need you to be careful. I want you to be careful. Don't make any decisions until you hear from everyone who will be impacted. And I'm very concerned that things got, the momentum got going at that last meeting, and I stood there in shock, thinking, "Don't do this yet. You took thousands of hours of input on OAS and charter." We deserve at least a few days of input at a few different board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Minu Sebastian followed by Catherine Cantu.
Hi, my name is Minu Sebastian. I'm here to express my concern about the staggering cost of insurance and the burden being placed on the classified employees in the district. I work as a three-hour instructional assistant in special education, and as a three-hour classified employee, I don't get any health insurance coverage. And I looked into it, and you either have to be a three-hour or a six-hour employee, and even if you're a four-hour employee, you still don't get that much coverage, but I don't have a choice. I either have to be a three-hour or a six-hour employee. So I feel like that, that in itself is unfair. But aside from that, as are my colleagues, I am highly qualified, dedicated, and committed to our students. If the insurance premiums continue to skyrocket and the district continues to increase the burden on the employees, then the district may lose highly qualified and experienced employees who will be forced to find jobs elsewhere. And that's the situation that I'm currently in. I love the job that I have, I really do, and I don't want to leave, but the cost of insurance is just getting way out of reach. So I urge you to please help us so that the school district and the students don't end up losing the dedicated staff they currently employ. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sebastian.
Catherine Cantu.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Cantu, and I'm a very, very happy fifth, five, fifth-year teacher at McKinley Elementary. I'd just like to speak on one issue that you'll be acknowledging tonight, which is the personnel decisions. We had a little bit of a shock today in that we're losing two of our teachers due to declining enrollment, but I think that there are special circumstances that we need to consider at McKinley. My class size today is a reasonable 24. I feel confident that I can work and reach each and every student. As of Monday, I will have 35, I repeat, 35 students in my classroom, sixth graders. Wonderful kids, but 35 is a lot to work with. Now, the special circumstances are the fact that McKinley is a third-year program improvement school. We are doing lots of wonderful things with your assistance, but we need more acknowledgement, and we need more help, and we can all be very proud of Eye La Vista School that has pulled itself out of program improvement. When I've talked to those teachers and I've asked them what helped, and they said smaller class size. It is about reaching each and every student, and it is very difficult when we have class sizes of 35. So I know that our hands are tied in a lot of respects. I am very sorry about declining enrollment, but please, I ask you to consider those of us, the schools, that are particularly being labeled program improvement, please come and ask what we need, and we will tell you. Smaller class size, more teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. That concludes public comment. Thank you very much for your time and interest in these issues.
Let me just say to the board that it's impossible to have 35 students in a 46th class by contract. That won't happen.
Okay, well, we are glad to hear that, and I hope that Ms. Cantu is glad to hear that as well. And you can, so you can, you can hold, you can hold us to that, that you won't have 35 on Monday. Okay, that moves us to the consent agenda. Do any board members have items to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull D2 and D3.
And I'd like to pull four, D, is three and four?
I misspoke. Three and four, sorry. Okay, not D2?
Not D2, sorry.
And I'm, I was interested in pulling three and four.
Okay.
One, two, and three.
Oh, so we do have two.
And, and five.
Okay. Two, three, and I have one. 10.
And nine.
Okay. So we virtually have no consent agenda.
But whatever, whatever remains, I will move to approve.
Okay, let me just clarify what remains.
One, two, one, six, seven.
No, six, seven, eight, and 11.
Right.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, for any members of the public who are interested in these items, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 9, and 10 will be taken up at the end of this agenda. That moves us to our action agenda. Item E1, appointment of community member to fill vacant position on the Measure V Bond Oversight Committee. Okay, Mr. Hetjung?
Good evening, board members. As pointed out in attachment E1, Mary Ann Cooley has served our bond oversight committee for three years and has advised us that she is stepping down from the committee. At this time, Jenny Cougar, who's also been serving on the bond oversight committee as a Dos Pueblos High School parent, her son has graduated, and she has expressed an interest in continuing on the committee and serving as an at-large position. As always, the board, it's completely your discretion. You can appoint someone tonight, you can not appoint someone tonight, you can appoint Mrs. Cougar, or you can appoint somebody else. But Mrs. Cougar, to my knowledge, is the only one that has contacted the facilities office to express an interest in a vacant position, but I would give you the footnote that it's probably not widely known that there is a vacant position.
That was actually going to be my question of whether this had been made very public or not, that there was a position open.
No, this, this happened, we didn't have bond oversight committee meetings the last three months, and our next meeting is next week on Wednesday.
Okay.
I think the fact that, you know, both of these people are Dos Pueblos parents, so they're aware of the situation out there. I would say that Mrs. Cougar has been an active member, not only on the bond oversight committee, but in numerous activities at Dos Pueblos High School. And, and both Mrs. Cooley and Mrs. Cougar have been instrumental with the committee in the past.
Board members?
I have no objection to approving this, but I think that the point is well-taken. The committee hasn't met for two months.
Two, maybe three.
Okay, so I think it's probably worth it to wait until our first board meeting after the bond oversight committee meets to see if there are any other folks who are interested.
Yeah, I would like to see us actually do, I mean, I have no doubt these two people are probably very qualified to be on the committee, and they may well end up being the people that we appoint, but I would certainly like to see a more public outreach to make sure that other members of the public are aware that the position, the positions are open, or the position is open.
I'd like to also say that there, and I fully support Ms. Cougar's, you know, qualifications and background. I'm just a little concerned we're heavily loaded with DP parents over the years and Mr. Vanish, so, I mean, I just wouldn't want there to be a perception that it's a DP-loaded committee. I don't know if that perception is out there, but just spread it across.
It's my perception that it's a DP-loaded committee and a, and a swimming-loaded committee. I would like to see, also, I share the sentiments that the president has expressed, that we should have some kind of more open process and some kind of outreach to make sure that a broader segment of the public knows about this and has a chance to come forward.
I'll be happy to bring us back at the next meeting, and if any board members have any names they'd like me to add to a cover memorandum, I'd be glad to do so.
Is there any way to send information out to the, like, PTAs or to some of the parents of the different schools so that more, a broader cross-section of the, of the community knows about the opening?
Well, there is in school newsletters, and that's an easy way to do it, but it does take a little time.
Well, and I guess I'd like to point out that, that each school brings parent representation. So the committee members at large, by the bylaws, it's usually to encourage people with a background in architecture, construction, finance, that sort of thing. One of the community at-large members who we lost more recently was property, was a project manager for multimillion-dollar construction projects and was a real asset to, to the committee. So those are the kinds of strengths that we're looking for in the-
You know, may I also say, it's also an opportunity for the board to bring in some other segment of the community. For instance, one of the members is representative of the Taxpayers Association. For instance, so, one of the members is representative of the Taxpayers Association. So opening it up to the community could be done, we could, we could even advertise it in the newspaper. I, I really would prefer not to spend the money on that, when I think the board members could bring potential names to us, either through organizations that someone might represent or names of people who they think in the community are, are representative of other interests and, and other points of view.
But Dr. Sarves, maybe you could, in your opening comments, when you do, when you talk about what's going on in the district.
Sure.
The next few meetings, could make a point of announcing to the public that there are openings on that, or any other committees also come to think of it.
I could do that.
Well, we can certainly also address the public now, and anybody who is here, and also anybody who watches this, hopefully this Saturday, which will be before the next meeting, if they are interested in serving on this committee, can notify Dr. Sarves's office or.
Yes.
Mr. Hetjung's office, that they would like to be considered for an appointment.
And there's information about the committee on our website, if people want background information about what the duties are and what the typical agenda looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Odrigues. I think that would be important for people to know. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjung. Okay, so, that, taking no action on item E1, we will move to item E2, second reading and approval of board policy and administrative regulation to ba, on, administrative regulation, sorry, 3513.3 Tobacco-Free Schools.
We had the first reading on tobacco-free schools and the signage requirement at our last meeting.
Thank you. In response to a couple of different inquiries on behalf of the board, we did some additional research. I want to bring to your attention that Penal Code 308B makes possession of a tobacco product by anyone under the age of 18 a crime. So that affects the sales. And that was the question that you asked, can we sell? Well, if you're 18, you can't. Also turns out that the Penal Code makes the County Health Department of Santa Barbara responsible for the enforcement and regulations concerning tobacco. The board at the last meeting also expressed an interest in having clarifying language, and I hope that what we present to you tonight clarifies that. We added a board member's concern to make sure that extracurricular activities, was a phrase that was added in there. We also took a look at Education Code 84901A and are recommending that we add that verbiage to our board policy. That makes it very clear that under no circumstances can students engage in smoking tobacco or possession of tobacco product while under the supervision jurisdiction of the school, including lunchtime. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. I felt, found the language that you added very helpful. Move to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board action on student expulsion, case numbers 0506-61, 0506-75, 0506-84, and 0506-100.
In case 0506-84, move to approve the terms of the stipulated agreement.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 4-0, 4-1.
In the case of 0506-100, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel and to include all campuses, including La Cuesta campuses, but not the home campus, as an option to the student.
Second. Okay.
I'm approving what the hearing panel recommended.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
Oh, anybody, jump in if you like. 0506-61, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0.
In the case of 0506-75, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Right. That brings us to the, the end of our action agenda. That moves us to our conference agenda, a report on federal, sorry, on federal adequate yearly progress, AYP, and state academic performance index, API, results for 2005, 2006. And I believe.
We just.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doc.
We just received the state performance report, and that included both AYP, AYP, adequate yearly progress, API, Academic Performance Index, and designation of program improvement status. And Dr. Davis Hayden will be making the presentation.
Hello.
Waiting for the PowerPoint to come up? Okay, so, this year, for the first year, they gave us everything pretty much at once. And so what I'm going to run through here is the federal part of the report, and then we'll go through the state part of the report. So for the federal part of the report, this is a summary of what happened and for last year in terms of the results that we got from the state and from the federal government. You can see that Cesar Chavez, for the first time, got a mark against it. You need to have two marks against, two years in a row before you go into PI. And so for, this is the first year that they've had their scores be low enough and enough scores to count. Their scores have been low enough in the past, but they didn't have enough students to make them significant. This year they did, as you know, Cesar Chavez's school population has been growing year after year. And so this year, they reached that point, they had enough students, and so it, it kicked in for them. So Cesar, Cesar Chavez has this year to try and raise those scores to the point that they can get out of the mark against them. And I really hope they do this, because next year, this mark, the percentage that you need to have proficient on the exams goes up by about 10 points, 10%. So this is their chance this year to clear their, their mark against them.
Dr. Hayden?
Yes, go ahead.
The, while they didn't have enough numbers, at least when you look on the state reporting system, they wouldn't have anything, do you have any idea how they were doing?
Yes, we're going to actually see that, but the, the federal government did not actually put the percent proficient onto the webpage. I don't know why they didn't do that, but they gave us a data file to download, and I was able to get the data for that. This year, their scores were about the same, a slight improvement in some areas, but basically about the same as their scores last year.
So this is not an anomaly this year?
No, it is not. Their A, their API score did go up a little bit. Like I say, there's a slight rise in their scores, but they do have a ways to go. So they got to really make some significant gains this year in order to get out of the problem that they might be getting into.
Dr. Hayden, there isn't a consequence for having a mark against them this year. The consequences come next year, is that correct?
That's right. So they got the chance this year. Monroe is a very fine school, as all our schools are, but they finally got a mark against them too. And so they have to work hard on erasing that mark this year too. Santa Barbara Charter, they don't take federal funds, and their problem is number of students taking the test. And so that's why they, they have a mark against them, but they have no funds, so it won't really do anything for them. Franklin went into year one of PI. So this is the second year in a row, they didn't make enough, they didn't make all their categories. And there's lots of categories, as you all know. Oh, there's like 40-some categories when you think about the participation and the making their marks. So they didn't make it. Harding also.
Could you just spell out a few of the consequences for our audience here?
Well, there's, there's not a heck of a lot of consequences. The first year, they have a, well, actually, Robin could probably address those. She's been working with this, with McKinley for several years, so go ahead, Robin.
Right. The first year is that thing called choice, where you send the letter out immediately, let the parents know that they have the choice of having their children at that school go to a school that's not a program improvement school, that identified as a program improvement school. That doesn't mean they have a choice of a certain school, just one that's not program improvement.
And that's probably the major issue for the first year.
When, when were they notified that they had this choice? I was always, have been concerned in the past that they don't learn about it until after school started, and, you know, no one's going to pull their kid then.
The letters went out.
When do we notify?
Immediate, within several days after we got the official notice, the letters went out to the parents.
And that was?
You got one.
School had already started, right?
Yes, because we don't have the information from the state.
Well, I thought they gave a, a kind of a warning, like, you know, this was likely to happen. At least a couple of years ago, they, there was a letter that preceded the actual official in saying, you know, pay attention, you might want to start thinking about this. That did not happen? There's no such letter?
There was the first year in for La Cumbre, which was four years ago.
Yes.
We got some advance warning. The actual notification didn't come out until mid-October. So here, we were going with preliminary information, and we let people know that it, it was likely to happen, and we were trying to gear up for the moment that we were finally given the official word.
So one would assume, then, that, that choice is somewhat meaningless in the first year.
Well, what the state's tried to do is to close up that time period. We get star results back earlier than we have in the past. They're trying to close up the time periods so that this report comes out before school starts. They haven't quite made it yet, but at least it's not mid-October.
Well, I can also just say that as, because I attended the back-to-school for Franklin, that Ms. Navarez was very clear to the parents, and there was, there were, it was quite good attendance. What PI status meant in terms of the fact that scores hadn't reached the state goals and, or federal requirements, and that, that the parents did have the option of moving their students. Now, granted, it was after school began, parents were at the school for back-to-school, but given our crazy timeline that, for when we get these numbers, I, I do, I can speak, at least for Franklin, that I felt a very good faith effort was being made to inform the parents. They had gotten the, the letter, they all knew about the letter, there were additional copies of the letter available for anybody who hadn't read it or hadn't gotten it. So I think there was a very good faith effort being made to inform the parents. The timing is problematic, I think.
If you'll permit me just to clarify, not only is a letter that provides parents the option of moving to a non-PI school, but parents who elect that option, the district is also required to pay for their transportation. So we're still gathering that data, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the requirements. Thank you.
We just corrected McKinley, it's three, not four. I think I put it in the same category as La Cumbre when I was throwing this up here, putting them both in year four of PI. But anyway, so this year, we have two new schools in PI status, and there are several schools who knew they were close, and they managed to not go into PI. They managed to raise their scores and keep out of getting their first mark against them or for going into PI. So earlier this year, I get, gave a report on the overall performance of the school district, and what I said there is we pretty much went flat, a slight rise, but pretty flat. And this is what's going to happen. If you're going along flat and you're really close to those boundaries, you're going to catch a few schools each year, and that's just what's going to happen. We have to go up a little bit better, more.
Dr. Hayden?
Yes.
Can you clarify, and for those who may not be familiar with how this works, about the, the, the ramping up of the, you know, the target getting higher and higher? So just when you think you're, you're there, you know, this, the, the marks need to be higher than they were in order to meet PI, and how that's going to, like you were just describing, it catches schools, well, that's really going to.
It's going to catch them in a year from now, yes, not this year, but next year. The way this works is that they have percent proficient that you're supposed to obtain, get to, attain with your schools. And so as you're going along, if you get 20, it's 20, around 24, 25% right now, in a year from now, it's going to jump to around 35%. And each year, the federal government, the way they're thinking about it, is that by the year, was it 2018, I think it is? 2014? 2014, you're supposed to be at 100%. This is a very difficult rubric, a difficult thing to have, to force schools to try and get to, because it's nearly impossible to get 100% of your schools, 100% proficient.
And what is the, what, when does the next notch?
Not this year. This year, they have the same percent proficient, but it rises about 10% next, the following year. So this is their last year.
And then after that, is it not, and it's yearly thereafter, is it not?
Yes, it's yearly thereafter. They gave you, the way they did it, is they started it slowly in the beginning to give schools enough warning to get a chance to get adjusted to this percent proficient, these hurdles, and then they're going to just go straight up after next year. It, it's going to catch pretty much every school in the nation eventually.
Yeah, it's totally unrealistic.
Yes, totally unrealistic. Everybody knows that, but no one's really doing anything about changing it. There are some changes, though, let me say that. For instance, the state of California has applied to substitute the API for the AYP. So the state version for what the federal version is. They were denied this year, but several states did get their, their growth process approved instead of the hurdle process. And so the state of California is going to apply again. So we may be able to change it to the, the state API approach instead of the federal government approach. So there's possibilities. I mean, it's not, you know, there could be changes to the no child left behind law.
Is it, since we don't have a slide today that shows how the, how the targets go up over time, is that, is there a place on the website that people could look for that if they're interested?
Oh, yes. You can go to the California Department of Education website, and there's several places you can get to that slide. So, I don't have it here in front of me right now. Actually, on our webpage, I believe that on the school board webpage, there is a spot that you can go to, that you can get to that. So if you go to Santa Barbara School District webpage, you can find a way to get to that webpage, the California Department of Education.
In moments when I haven't been able to remember where I left my paper, I, I think I just used Google and put.
Yes.
Schedule AYP, calendar AYP, something like that, and you can get it pretty readily.
Yeah, put California, because otherwise Google doesn't know what state you're looking for. California, and you can put, you know, AYP or California, no child left behind, and usually it'll take you to the state webpage.
I think it's always good to have that as a companion to any discussion here, because for those people that may not understand that, it looks like our schools are just getting worse and worse, and, and it may not be, they may not realize that, you know, as the target goes up. So I think it's, I think it's good for us to present this information together so that people are aware that the performance at Harding and Franklin didn't all of a sudden plummet, the standards went up, or the percentage.
Well, I think, I think the reality here is that the standards are already at a point that they're pretty difficult to meet for some of the subgroups. And so since they're at that point, they're like, almost like a crossing point, for the subgroups, it's going to get harder and harder to meet these standards. And so now you're at the point that any one year, a school could, by, I don't, I want to say luck, but it's sort of like that, by statistical, the statistical error rate, you might say, it could get caught and fall below the percent proficient. And so that's going to happen, and we go to 35%, it's going to happen a lot more often.
A lot more.
So it, it is part of a statistical process. When you have 40-some categories, or I think it's 36 maybe, categories that you can get caught in terms of failing, no child left behind, there's a high probability that one of those categories will catch you. And, and that's what's happening right now, and it's going to be even worse in a year from now.
Also, just to make Ms. Odrigues's point too, I think, that it's also important for the public, I think, to realize or to be aware that in many cases, some of these scores have actually gone up at the schools.
Yes.
But because the target keeps changing, even though the schools are improving, they may not be meeting the target. So it does, it clearly. So it does, it clearly doesn't mean that the schools are getting worse. In many cases, they're, they're getting much stronger, but the target is changing and will continue to change. And so they, it may continue to, as you said, catch more and more of our schools.
Just too many categories.
Target did not change this year.
No.
And some of the schools went down.
Yes.
So.
But they didn't go down much, and that's what I'm saying. We pretty much went level and a little bit rise, and because of that, you get a certain number of schools that are going to get caught just because of the probability it's going to happen.
Next year when it goes up.
It's true. The next, the following year when it goes up, then it's going to be worse.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh. You had these with you?
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez's book. You can put the English language charts there. You can see the chart.
Just to clarify, what we're showing.
There you go.
What we're showing are the targets for unified districts and high school districts that have grade seven and eight, but they're not, the, the targets are not substantially different for the elementary district.
So here you can see, right now, it's actually 24.4 for English language arts for the elementary district instead of 23. And you can see next year, or this year, this is the last year, it's going to stay there, and the next year, it's going to go to 34, and it's probably going to be like 35% for our schools in the elementary district. And you can see what it's doing, just like Bob Noel was saying, it was just, it's going to just go straight up after that. This is really unrealistic to expect every school to get to that point in 2014.
Yeah, and let me just say, and, because I have a lot of ambivalence about this, it's unrealistic, but sort of like the striving is so important that, that, that you hate to think of abolishing the goal, but the goal is just, it's not proximal, I think was the term you would use as a psychologist, it's not within reach.
Uh-uh.
And therefore loses its motivational force. And I, I'm, I've kind of felt that, I believe that the legislation's coming up for renewal in the, in the Congress next year. Going to depend a lot on what happens at the House, but I fully expect major changes in that, in that schedule, or that's not the elementary schedule, but in, in those schedules.
Well, I think what might happen is what we already see happening is states applying for a growth model instead of this hurdle model.
Yeah.
And it's already being approved, so the State Department of Education is already looking at making some changes in that direction. And I'm, the next slide we show is going to actually talk about how the state is trying to change its growth model to meet the federal guidelines. So why don't we go to the next slide? Next one. Oh, I haven't done Galida. These are the secondary district and Galida Valley, last year, just squeaked through with some safe harbor and all the rest of that, and this year, it missed one category, I believe it was, and so, or two categories, by just a little bit, so they got a mark against them again. San Marcos, now, the high schools are based upon the exit exam, and I'll talk about that in a second, but exit exams are used for a lot of different things. It's the California High School Exit Exam, and one of the things they used for is the federal government categories, percent proficiency here. And San Marcos is right on that very edge. Actually, I think it's only maybe one or two students that they miss getting their mark for. And so we're going to look through the students in the, it's in the English learner category, and we're going to go through them very carefully to look for data corrections. And what that means is that we're going to look in the CUM files, we're going to see if there's a wrong date for any of the students or a wrong classification for any of the students, because if we can just find maybe two students, it might take them out of their first mark against them. So that's how close this can get in terms of how, how it works. Santa Barbara Junior High and Lacumbre, as you know, are continuing in PI. So next slide? Oh, that's right, I do. There we go. Now, this is the state. And the thing that's different here is, it's not 100% new, but it is something, something that's happening, is you see all these categories over on the right, the subgroups? Well, at this point in time, they're trying to make the growth model conform to the federal model so they can substitute the growth model for the federal model. And to order to do that, they got to have all these subgroups added in, which unfortunately means they have more categories they cannot meet their API on. So it's kind of a catch-22 here in terms of, but at the same time, it is a good, it's a better model because, I think it's a better model, because a school can show growth and still make its mark, and, and, and so a school that's low can continue to rise and get better and better. And schools that are above a certain mark then aren't penalized if they go backwards. So I, I kind of feel like it's a, it's a more, less punitive model for trying to enforce growth in your students.
But, but Dr., it, when you calculate out the formula for setting the growth targets using, with the California so-called growth model, the, and 800 is the target for the California model. For a lot of our schools, it's 35 years, 25, 35, in some cases, 50 years, that they would have to make 800.
Well.
In some, in a couple of cases, I calculated this out a year or so ago when the CDE came out with its pride and joy list of the schools that had done so well in their growth in LA, and yet were still getting sanctions from the feds. And even those schools which had done well, they started so low, it was like 75 years before the California growth model, even if they made every target every year, before they would reach 800.
Yes, I understand that.
So that model, that model goes the other extreme, in my opinion, of not providing the kind of incentive.
Well, let's take a look at our schools, and you're right for Cesar Chavez, the one we already talked about. But if you look at most of our schools, like Adam, 742, it's almost at 800. And Cleveland, 700. Franklin, Harding's at almost 700. So we're not talking about schools that have a long ways to go. Yes, it may take them many years to get to 800, but they're doing quite well already.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the model, the expectation of the model.
The model, I agree.
If you start at 697, the, the model probably says 35 years before you, to get to 800.
Well, for Cesar Chavez, yes, at 600, it may take them at, let's say, 10 points a year, in, in the beginning is what they have to make. It's going to take them a while to get to 800, but at least they're growing towards that mark and they're not being penalized just because they can't make a certain, I, this is really, this is really an issue for you guys to discuss, I guess, but I can just present it and say that if we look at these marks here, most of them are pretty high, they're pretty close to the 800 mark.
The other problem, and I just, I mean, I'd like to make sure that, that the public understands some of the limitations of this California growth model. The other, more serious limitation is that it uses the same formula for all subgroups.
Yes.
So what happens is that if you start with a, with a, with a gap between two subgroups, say, the white subgroup and the socio-economically disadvantaged subgroup, if you start with a gap of 120 points, you calculate that out as far as you want. Mathematically, at infinity, it's still the same number of points.
You know, they changed that though. That is, that is true how it used to be. The subgroups only had a certain number of points and every subgroup had the same number of points, but now that, now that...
Eighty percent of the difference between 800 and the existing score.
Now the subgroups that are down farther have to grow more than the subgroups that are up higher.
That is good news.
So there is some change to this.
That's good news.
And I agree with you, the growth model could have some more change to it, just like the no child left behind, but I think, personally, I think this is a better model.
It takes into consideration the moving people from the very bottom up, whereas the other model doesn't do that.
No, the other, the other model, you got to make a huge change to get to the percent proficient before you're even in the game.
Right.
This one here, you're still in the game if you're making advances.
So for us, it actually motivates teachers and so forth to, across the board, to help kids, to help all kids, not just kids who are on the margins, to move over.
I agree with that. So anyway, you can see how we're doing here. Go ahead.
I had a question about what the numbers on the, right, in terms of where the subgroups are? For example, there, where it says minus eight or minus 14. Is that how mu, is that a, a drop in the score from last year?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, so our, so it looks like, for example, at Franklin and Harding, Latino students had significantly lower scores this year, and some of the socio-economically disadvantaged students too. And then they, at Harding, the EL students, definitely, their scores dropped dramatically from last year.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, and I guess I, I'm finding that really troublesome, given that these are schools that were working hard to try to improve their scores because of their PI status.
Yes. Well, Harding wasn't in the PI, had a mark against it, but it did go into PI.
Mm-hmm.
And I think some of the issues here is, is that last year was, I, I can't re, maybe Robin can speak to this better, last year was the first year we really put a lot of energy into making some significant changes in the schools, and were, those changes did not come until later on in the school year, and yet the test happened. And so have we had enough chance to see whether the changes are affecting the test or not? We may have, it, it's one of those things, you, you almost have to wait a year and a half before you know whether or not the changes you made are having any effect. And I don't, that's, that's the problem with this type of a system.
Could you, could you, the, the number that leaps off the page is Santa Barbara Charter school with minus 50. Could you talk about that a little bit? What's going on there?
There was a significant drop in the score. It went from 755 to 705. I mean, 755 was a really strong score. I don't know what's going on in Santa Barbara Charter. I just can see the minus 50 growth there. You'd have to ask Santa Barbara Charter what's happening there.
They, they didn't come to the last, or did they? They don't come, they don't even come to our meeting to where we get to ask them.
No, single school plan? No.
Yeah. Because we, I do know, and I'm anxious to see the similar school scores when they come out, for their demographic, they've also done, they've been right down at the bottom in the, in the, in the state ranking system. So not only in absolute terms does it look like a precipitous drop, but I, my guess is that they will be at the bottom of the bottom, which, in terms, compared to other schools that have the, of the democrat, similar demographic composition.
And Bob, you know statistics quite well, so you'll notice something up there that I'm sure that some other people have noticed too, is that, I said that we went pretty much sideways, and if you were to add up the pluses and the negatives, you'd come out close to going sideways, and that's part of what's going on here. And also, you will notice that in many cases, there's a few that are in the twenties, one in the fifties, but in general, those pluses and minuses are probably about the amount that you could expect a school to go up and down just due to shifting populations and other activities that are going on. So we have to look at the long-term, like a three or four-year plot. We can't look at a single-year plot, and since our school district pretty much went sideways, then Franklin may just be the unfortunate victim of having a class that brought it down, and Cleveland, the happy not victim, fortunate one to have a class that brought it up some. And this is part of a natural distribution of scores.
Yeah, but Dr. Hayden, I, I always like, I understand.
You understand stats, yes.
I understand it in administrative district perspective, it's the district, and we're looking at the balance. Kids don't go to districts, they go to schools.
I know.
And the kids at that school that went down 50 must have experienced something educationally.
I would agree with the minus 50, yes.
Excuse me, didn't you say at the very beginning that Santa Barbara Charter had a problem with not a number, not enough students taking the test?
Yes.
And that would have a huge effect on the score.
You will notice that for no child left behind, they have high enough scores to be perfectly fine for percent proficient, but they got caught in no child left behind for not enough students taking the test. In the growth model, their students score high, but last year, they tried harder or something on the test, and this year, they didn't, and so they dropped 50 points.
Or it could be just a matter of who took the test.
And it could be a matter of maybe some of the brighter kids just choosing not to take the test this year. There are those possibilities, yes.
Can I ask a sort of a related question to that? As far as the students who choose, the parents that choose to send their children to a different school and they've been identified as PI, and they can choose that option every year, year one, year two, year three, do we know, have we had enough movement out of PI schools into other schools that that would affect our scores if those were higher achieving students?
I'll let Robin answer that.
Actually, at the elementary level, we only had McKinley last year and we didn't have one request for transportation or movement.
Wow.
I, at this year, right now, I don't think we have anything so far this year in elementary.
In the secondary district, it's not a significant factor either, and neither is it in elementary at this time.
So there was no flight from Santa Barbara or Lacumbre to La Colina?
There is a flight, but it is not a significant flight.
What's that mean?
There, there are students, for example, at Lacumbre, there was approximately 20 students, more accurately, there were 51 students that were scheduled to attend Lacumbre who made a decision not to enter that school and go to La Colina. But their test scores, they were brand-new students, i.e. seventh graders, so their scores would not be in the Lacumbre batch to begin with.
But that's a lot of students.
It, it is a lot of students, no doubt about it. But I'm just answering your question that it did not impact their performance on the AYP.
My question has had to do with how many left, that's all.
Okay.
How many, you know, left the PI schools? I ask it simply because the, you hear a public discussion about one of the problems with, with no child left behind is that when people do exercise the choice option, it's usually not the kids that, who are low performers, but it's kids who are high performers, and, which of course was not the intent of the, of the legislation in the first place.
Dr. Noel, we have run a study on those 56, and you are very accurate in your representation of the facts. Those were high-performing students. They were not, and not low-income students who chose not to continue on with Lacumbre.
Thank you.
One, one more question about the supplemental services that we have, and that's another item on our agenda tonight, but are we making any correlation between the student, the schools where students chose to use those tutoring services and the test scores?
Well, I will be running a study on that. Cynthia and I, she, she's, gave me the data, but then she said she needed to send me a different data set, and I just haven't had a chance to actually look at it yet, but we will take a look at that data.
Because McKinley had the highest number of students availing themselves of those services, and they went up by one point, so it seems promising.
Now, McKinley is an unfortunate example of that. They needed to go up by, I think, three points in order to make their API growth model, but they only went up one point, so they didn't go up enough to make their growth model growth, so. Go to the next slide then.
Just a second.
Oh, darn, I keep forgetting. Thank you. This is the secondary district, and once again, basically quite high scores. Lacumbre is actually the only one that's below 700, and it's still pretty high. They went up 10 points, and so they made the growth model. They get a no overall because they had a couple of sub, subgroups that went down, and that's just the way the growth model works with the new subgroups in it. So overall, not a single school in the secondary district made the API growth model. But once again, if you look at that, four schools went up, three schools went down, were pretty much slight upward growth, but not a lot.
May I ask you a question about that? Because when I was studying the formula for calculating the adequate yearly performance.
The AYP or the API?
The AYP. And I guess, well, I can wait if there's another slide.
No, it's okay, I don't have another slide, but are, you, the AYP doesn't have a formula, it's just one score, but I think...
Yeah, that, that's, that was what I meant by formula.
Okay.
And, and it being based on the, the high school exit exam.
For the second year for the high schools.
Rather than, rather than scores in the disciplines from the California Standards Test, one has the impression that that's, that that is pretty, that the high school exit exam is nowhere near as difficult as the California Standards Exam. What's your opinion?
I would agree, it's nowhere as difficult. The unfortunate side of that, though, is that the kids try harder for it. And so that, if they're trying harder, you're going to have more passing it. So there is a kind of a, a flip-flop issue going on here, that the easier tests are the kids that try harder on, so do you, are they more passing it because it's easier? Are they more passing it because they're trying harder on it? 60% of your API, I think it's 30% from your KCE, your exit exam English, and 30, 0.3, 30% from your exit exam math. go into the API. So it, it is the strongest weight
Yeah.
in the API. But unfortunately, in the high schools, I don't think that the students are putting that much attention into, um, putting that much effort into the STAR testing. So we, like I say, it's, how do you differentiate effort versus easiness?
Would that explain why maybe on the KC, uh, the kids with disabilities, uh, were not, um, got waivers this year on the KC? So that may explain why they didn't try, perhaps, maybe, hopefully, they didn't try it on?
Actually, I hadn't thought of that one. And one of the things I asked Joanne, I said, "We need to look at those numbers for the disability to figure that out." And that is a very good possibility, that if the parents and the students knew that early enough, they may not have tried that hard for the STAR testing. Or for the KC testing. That's a distinct possibility. Any more questions about how we did? As I can, as you can see here, my overall impression is that we pretty much went sideways and got caught a few more times because of doing that. And we need to, we need to turn that corner and start going up a little bit.
Well, but you, I mean, again, you're taking a district-wide perspective.
Right.
I'm looking, I'm looking at DP. Now, this is what, the second, third year that we've seen a decline at DP? This is a cause for concern.
Actually, yes, it is, I believe, the second year. But the first year that you saw the decline, they were well above eight hundred, and, or, uh, signif- uh, high enough above eight hundred that they took the loss, and it, it didn't hurt them. But this year, as you can see, there went from two points under eight hundred down to sixteen points under eight hundred. And so, yes, that's the second year in a row that they've had a decline. Not a large decline, not a statistically large decline, but it is a decline nonetheless.
The difficulty, I think, with all these, with all the numbers, and, um, and I guess in a way that's why it, it may behoove us to look at a district aggregate, but it's hard to do that, because we want to look at the
The schools.
the individual schools. It's, it's difficult to know whether the numbers up or down really reflect learning and/or teaching, or whether they reflect test-taking practices.
I would agree with you, except for the fact that, um, if we start looking at either large numbers or over many years, that's when you can start to make sense of this.
Right, that-
Any one school, one score, I would completely agree with you. And, and so that's what we have to look at.
Yeah, I was actually going to say that I agree with you, because you, you had alluded to that before, about needing to look at a long, a long-term.
When I gave out the board focus goals to each of the individual schools, uh, it has the three-year, uh, graphs on it, and three-year perspective. And that's why we did that, so they can see their scores over a three-year period, and make some kind of a, a sense as to, are they going up, are they staying parallel, or are they going down? And I think that's, you know, that would be a more sensible way to look at their scores.
Do we have a slide like that on our website? Because I think for people-
No, I have them all right here, if you want. I mean, that'd take a lot longer to look at, but I do have that for each and every school.
No, I, I mean, I don't need, I don't necessarily want us to look at all of those tonight, but I'm suggesting that when parent, for example, when parents are, are told that they have an, an option of choosing another school, when a school enters PI status.
It's up to you. Do you want me to put all those, uh, slides onto the webpage? For each of the schools?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how many slides you mean. What I would, what I was thinking is that if we had a slide that, as you said, showed a three-year-
It's about two pages for each school.
Well, I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that. To, and I don't know if it has, if, if there's any way to narrow it down so that it doesn't have to take a full two pages, or it, can you, can you truncate it in some ways? But, but I do think that for parents trying to make a decision like that, I would rather encourage people to make decisions based on appropriate data, rather than on
One-year data.
inappropriate data. Because I think, when we only list one year, we encourage people to, to look at one-year data as though they mean something. Um, well, I'm obviously, they mean something, but as though they mean the thing that people think they mean. Um-
I understand you.
And so I would rather encourage people not to make that assumption. But I also don't understand the limits of what we can do, so I, I don't, I'm not sure that-
Well, may, may I offer that, uh, on the school accountability report card, we offer some thirty-four data points, as I recall.
That's quite a few.
And those are multiple year.
And they're, and they're on the, they're on the web.
They're the SARS, right, they're already on the web.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to ask Dr. Sarvis, uh, because, because, uh, Mrs. Cordell raises a, uh, an interesting point. You know, I, I interpret it as being a question about the validity of the California Standards Tests that are ultimately contribute to those numbers. And to me, the, I, I look at this, I say, "Okay, I see a minus fourteen," and I agree with you, Mrs. Cordell. Uh, I'd like to see the context within which that's occurring. But also, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear from Dr. Sarvis, what's your opinion about what, what, whether that's really measuring something real out there, uh, in terms of academic achievement?
For the API?
Yeah.
I believe this does measure something real, yes. I think you get extreme fluctuations at, uh, at smaller schools, or junior highs, where you've got a brand-new population in one year, and, and the students you've worked with for two years have left the school. You get those same fluctuations at the high school level. Um, I think these additional points, potential points of failure, uh, so I believe there are, what, twenty-four potential points of failure, uh, that are now being added to the API, uh, don't really help us in that model. I mean, if you fail in one area, if you fail, uh, to bring your students who are English learners up to a certain point, uh, in English Language Arts, and all the other subgroups make tremendous growth, then you fail to make AYP. If this model will eventually get used.
I'm just talking about API.
Yeah.
So, when we look at DP, two, two years' decline at DP.
Yes.
Is, is that, are those artifacts of the testing process, or are those reflections of educational issues?
I believe there's enough continuity in effort, in preparation at the school, that those are not artifacts just of testing. Uh, it, the API is also comprised of the STAR results, the, the California Standards Test results, and, uh, the high school exit exam results. These are, those are wrapped into these. And no, I think they are real. I think they're showing that there is not as much learning, uh, at that school. It, it's not a huge difference, but it's enough of a difference to worry us.
Okay, thank you.
It's enough of a difference to worry the school as well. And I remember meeting with the staff
I'm sure it is.
in January of this last year, and they were concerned that they weren't continuing to make, uh, headway in their growth.
And I just want to clarify, I don't, I am not suggesting that I think these numbers are invalid, or that I think the test does not, lacks validity. My concern is that when we look at, at numbers sort of in isolation in one year, it's hard to know what they mean, and, and what they don't mean. And so, my concern is making sure that we try to utilize the numbers and the data in a way that, where we can be more comfortable that we know what they are telling us.
I completely agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do we, do we need to take a break? Okay, if, if the board will, if the audience will indulge us, we're going to take our break a little bit early. Um, we will, uh, break for fifteen minutes, and we will return, um, promptly. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. And before we resume our meeting, I would actually like to, um, acknowledge a couple of people in the audience. As many people know, we are about to enter, um, our sort of election period, our campaigning period, and our political period. And so, we have three, uh, candidates for the school board sitting in the audience, and one on our panel. Um, uh, Dr. Noel, who will be seeking reelection in the upcoming campaign. We also have Roseanne Crawford in the audience, Kate Parker, and Suzie Coffin, who are ca- also going to be candidates for the school board in November. And we have our illustrious Lynn Rodriguez, who will be leaving us. So, um, we wish you all the best in, uh, these next couple of months, and we trust that it will be a great campaign. So, thank you for being here, and we appreciate your interest.
I think you should all be sitting in the front row. It's like you're hiding back there.
Okay, so we can continue then with item F2, report on the Santa Barbara High School District's, um, advancement via individual determination or AVID program. And Mr. Zettel will be giving us the information on this.
Let me just say that Mr. Zettel has led quite a team approach this summer for training and getting these AVID programs going, so he's been very close to this.
Uh, this is something that really is close to, to, to my heart. I-
And board focus goals.
And, actually, yes, board focus goals. Um, I, I was the first person to bring AVID to a high school, and I know the work that that took. Uh, this did not take that kind of work. History lesson, nineteen eighty-two, a young English teacher, uh, with big hair, I won't, shouldn't say that, but Mary Catherine Swanson, uh, started a program that she called advancement via in, individual determination, uh, at Claremont High in San Diego. That program has grown tremendously. Uh, its research, uh, its, um, work with students, uh, across this country and internationally is now in great renown. Uh, we're seeing things come out of AVID that, uh, it's one of the programs that works, uh, and works for the middle-level student, the student that we would really like to support, um, being prepared for a four-year university. Uh, it's, it's not a program of remediation or deficits, it's a program of high achievement. And in nineteen ninety-two, this district embraced AVID. And for a number of reasons. One, because AVID was a for-profit organization at that time, uh, went away from it. And we went to a program called REACH, which was an AVID program, and, you know, arose as arose by any other name, uh, with support from UCSB for that REACH program. Over the years, the program, uh, continued strongly at some schools, and others, it changed into something else. Uh, and my feeling was, after talking to our principals and, uh, team of people, uh, at the district, that we needed to bring support back to district AVID teachers. Uh, support in terms of, uh, their own collaboration, support in terms of tutors, support in terms of curriculum. AVID now is a nonprofit. They're closely aligned and partnered with, uh, a number of national organizations, including the College Board. Uh, they are support, well-supported in the state with dollars, uh, and they bring to us a great deal more than they did in nineteen ninety-two. And it's for that reason I'm glad to reconnect. Uh, I'd like to reconnect the board with, uh, information about AVID. Uh, AVID, the program itself, uh, for me, when I went to see AVID working, I went to San Diego, and I heard from AVID students. Uh, that's what did it. I didn't have to hear anything else. Uh, what the students tell us is, is incredible. And so I'm gonna have you sit back, and I don't have popcorn, but enjoy this, uh, short little video.
Yeah, I never knew what I was really capable of, till I was in AVID, and I realized that every year I would just do more and more, and every day just accomplish way more than I thought I could the day before.
What AVID does is, it takes those middle students and those lower students, and it pushes them up to the best.
The most important thing about AVID, I think, is ability to provide a very supporting structure for students who have an interest in going to college, but on their own would have a much, much tougher time with doing it.
I never felt like I was by myself, because I had my AVID teachers, I had my AVID tutors, and then, of course, I had my AVID classmates, who I shared a special bond with that I didn't share with other kids.
AVID is a program that will help those students or those kids in our society who do not have a history of higher education.
Most of the stuff I learned in AVID, I had already learned from my dad, from his experience. He'd pass it on to me. And again, that's part of the ripple effect of AVID.
AVID is really important to me, because I am who I am because of AVID.
Twenty-five years ago, as today, we had a problem in our schools that is euphemistically called the Achievement Gap. That is, the students who are most successful in our public school system come from educated families, but students who might not speak English, whose parents haven't gone to college, whose parents really don't know how to support them academically at home, have a very difficult time in many of our schools.
I didn't speak in English when I came to San Diego. I, I had a, a vocabulary of about six words, and I didn't even know how to use them. Uh, so it, it was a rough, a rough time for me.
I was speaking Somali, and I was speaking Swahili, and they wouldn't understand. Sometimes students would come and take my pencils, because they had asked, "Can I borrow your pencil?" And I said, "Uh," and they took that as a yes, like, "We're going to share." And I would jump on them just to kill them. It was nothing like I wanted to hurt, though. I wanted to kill them, that's what you do in the jungle. So, very much thinking like an animal, didn't know how to think like a human being.
Many people really believed that if you came to this country not speaking English, you weren't gonna make it, depending on how you dressed, how you spoke, how you looked. People made judgments within our school systems, and we have ended up in many schools with the have and have-nots. That's a good way to destroy a democracy very quickly, when only certain groups of people can succeed.
I came from a society that had very low expectations for me. I was expected to get pregnant at an early age. I was expected to drop out of school. Um, even more so in my community, I was expected to probably join a gang. So it was expected that at some point, something would drag me down. And I might have even expected that a little bit for myself.
What AVID has proved over twenty-five years is if we approach this well within our school systems, then these students will succeed. And I think that's broken many stereotypes.
We were all an avid kind of, what do I call it, throwaway kid, in our own way. We all, we each had our own stories, we each had our own difficulties. But we all had that motivation to succeed in too. And we knew where we were going, the direction that AVID supported us with. We knew where we were going, but, so we each helped each other. We had our own goals. Some might have wanted to be doctors, some might have just wanted to graduate high school or graduate college, but we definitely wanted to succeed.
The interesting thing that we found out was that when students have a reason to learn the basic skills in order to do well in a class, they'll work very hard to learn them. And in fact, they learn them rather quickly. And that was a pleasant surprise.
I know that my other teachers, my first counselor, gave me these very easy classes because she didn't think I wanted or needed harder classes. She assumed I wasn't going to go to college. Like many other people like me, uh, who came from southeast San Diego in the bus, who were of Hispanic, uh, background, she assumed we were not interested in going to college. And Mary Catherine did not assume that.
If she had given me that look, "Oh, oh, you're from Somalia. Oh, you didn't go to school. Oh," then, then I would have gotten discouraged, which I did in most teachers and in their classrooms. They kind of pitted me, and they're like, "Oh, you're a great person, that's wonderful." But that's not what I was up for. I wanted to learn, and I didn't consider myself a great person. I'm like, "I'm in a desperate situation, can you educate me?"
On a more personal level, for the students themselves, it was helping them change beliefs about themselves. They never saw themselves in an academic setting before. They didn't have images of what it might be like to go to college. They had no basis on which to be able to picture themselves in a setting that we were trying to create for them. And to help them have those images, and then let them see that they actually fit those images, was a real challenge.
It was hard trying to explain to my family why college was such a big deal to me. I'm the first in my family to attend college. Not that they discouraged me from going to college, but they just couldn't understand why this little black girl from the hood- why this little black girl from the hood wanted to go to college so bad.
Many of our students live in situations that aren't safe. School is actually a safer setting for them than their own community and their homes are.
Well, let's just say drugs, alcohol, and domestic violence was my daily reality.
In 1993, the Civil War happens, so my mom came to the jungle to get me. But by that time I had gotten malaria and my grandmother had moved on, dug my grave. And I was just lying unconscious, she put me near the grave so that hopefully the winds or something would roll me in. And just lying there and kind of saying my goodbye, what I really say in it, because I couldn't speak. And just watching her walk away. And I laid there for I don't know how many days until my mom walked up to me and we went to Somalia to give me some help and to show the capital.
Once we show these students how to be academically successful, they simply fly. In the process of doing that, they not only change their lives, but they change the lives of their entire families and communities.
Well, there's been a very dramatic change in our family. If you think back to my mother's family where she was one of 13 and none of them went to college. Now, the next generation in my family, all eight of us have gone to college.
A motto that we have in many of our AVID classrooms is "All learning depends on respecting the dignity of the learner." Just imagine how different our whole society would be if we always treated everyone else with dignity. That means that if I honor you for who you are as a human being, things become possible for you in my eyes. And when a teacher does that, it totally changes a student's life.
Well, my senior year of college was, I would say, the most troubling for me financially, emotionally, mentally, and physically. Because I actually had an accident that year. And periodically, I sent emails to both Mary Catherine and Ron Ottinger informing them of my progress. And I sent them an email and I told them, you know, "This is way too much for me and I don't have the money, I can't continue." And they said, "You know, precious, how much do you need to continue out?" And I told them. And within days, a check had arrived at the university. It was unbelievable because I didn't feel like I was begging or that I was receiving a handout. It was just simply a child in need. And then of course, I got back here to San Diego and I thought, you know, I didn't figure out how I'm gonna pay the rent. And she said to me, "Don't worry about that, you know, we have some people that we might want you to talk to every once in a while." And continue representing AVID the way you have, and that's paid back enough for me. And I made it through my senior year, I graduated Kumwani in my class, and now I'm back home ready to give back to our community the way AVID gave to me.
I look back now on my students, some of whom now graduated 21 years ago, and what they're doing today. And I could have never, ever imagined.
Me and my four younger brothers who went through the AVID program, all graduated from four-year universities in various careers. I am a graphic designer.
I expected myself to become an engineer and draw up the plans that my dad used to build the buildings. And it was, it was very real for me that that's what was going to happen, and it eventually did.
I am very excited about AVID medical school. Yes, I know it's gonna be a long, hard road and I'll probably be in school till I'm like 30. But if you think about it, we're all gonna reach the age of 30, and the difference is how successful we're gonna be.
Right now, I am at UC Berkeley, it's my fourth year, I'm graduating in May. With a major in legal studies and I want to learn Afro-American studies. I want to go to Johns Hopkins or Howard. After that, I want to be a doctor, definitely spend a lot more time giving back.
When I first got accepted, I was happy to get accepted, but then it occurred to me, oh, this is MIT, this is one of the toughest schools to get into, one of the toughest ones to study at.
Hopefully I'll have my teacher credential soon, I do plan to get my law degree. And from there, the sky is the limit for me.
We didn't understand that we were going to be changing the course of history. We simply were a group of students and a teacher who wanted to do the very best we could do. And so, it's very exciting 25 years down the road to see that indeed we have changed the course of history.
It started with one English teacher who had a dream. And she's directly affected the lives of thousands of kids, but she's indirectly changed the entire world.
I'd say this is just where we want to go. And currently, right now, we have AVID teachers, 50 of them, who went to San Diego this summer, worked hard for a whole week in individual strands that they were in. AVID is not just anymore an elective class. AVID is a pathway for English teachers, a pathway for science, math teachers, and social science, actually all teachers, to use. And so, we took with us not just AVID elective teachers or REACH elective teachers, but teachers who are going to use the strategies of AVID to AVIDize the school. And that's the way we put it. Today, I walked around the campus at La Colina, walked into a classroom, looked down. Young man was writing Cornell notes from a lecture, and beautifully. Here's an 11-year-old young man using the skills he's learned from an AVID teacher to take Cornell notes. Unbelievable. And AVID is about skills and skill building, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that now. Go ahead. Do I need this? Okay, what do I push?
That advances, that's your point of view, that is fact.
Okay, cool. I'm gonna go rather quickly through some of this and not take, go through every slide. So, I may bypass a couple, but you have it here. So, 75% of new job growth requires some level of post-secondary training. And you can see that a four-year degree in the coming years will be critical to have an adult life that is satisfying. And at least a life where you can make a great deal more choices than you can if you have less than a high school graduation. So, here's a challenge. 71% of kids plan to attend college, 32% of teachers expect their students to attend college, and 51% of parents believe their children will attend college. And these are the hopeful faces that come into the schools. I've seen them, I've talked to ninth-grade parents, talked to ninth-grade teachers and students. And this is pretty, pretty close to the truth, we're all going to college. This is from Ed Trust, and this is a national look at college-going. So, of 100 kindergarteners, you can see it broken into white, African-American, and Hispanic students. This number graduates from high school, the green, out of 100 kindergarteners starting. And look what happens to white students. By the time they get to the end of four years of college, 33 will have completed a college degree. Of African-American students, 87% graduate, 18% obtain a college degree. And of Hispanic students, 63% graduate and 11 obtain a college degree. And we're fixing to change that. So, what have we learned changing roles, middle and high schools? What do we know that has to happen? To develop an equitable college-going culture in secondary schools, college is by design, not by chance. We're not gonna hope anymore, we're going to be intentional. So, here's the mission of AVID. To ensure that all students, and most especially the least-served kids who are in the middle, will succeed in rigorous curriculum. There's no dummying down of curriculum, this is rigorous curriculum. Will complete a rigorous college preparatory path, will enter mainstream activities of the school, will increase their enrollment in four-year colleges, and will become educated and responsible participants and leaders in a democratic society. Its systemic approach is designed to support students and educators as they increase school-wide, district-wide learning and performance. It is a systemic approach. It's not a silver bullet. I don't want anyone to get that, you know, from the great music, it's not a silver bullet. I don't want you to, this is hard work. It's creating a college-going culture, pathways to rigorous curriculum, and scaffolding strategies. And these are the strategies I'd like to look at right now. Writing, inquiry, collaboration, and reading. And these were the simple strategies that Mary Catherine began with, added to, and that we'd like to begin teaching our students in the whole high school. So, what's the AVID profile? Who goes into an AVID elective classroom? Students with academic potential, first of all, average to high test scores, C to a B-plus average. College potential with support, desire and determination. Without determination, there's no student that's gonna make it. And when you choose an AVID class, you do it very carefully. Sometimes you have kids interviewed to be in AVID, and sometimes you have to tap kids on the shoulder and say, "Could I talk to you for a minute about AVID?" They meet one of the following criteria. They're the first in their family to ever have attended college, historically underserved in four-year colleges, low income, and maybe some special circumstances surrounding their family life or themselves. So, here's a sample week in the AVID elective. AVID curriculum on Monday, Wednesday, and that's a writing curriculum. They talk about college, they talk about careers, they talk about strategies for success, and they teach the skills. Tuesdays and Thursdays are tutorials, and we're working now with Cal Soap. We just met today with Jane Connolly, who is talking to us about providing tutors. Met with Richard Duran from UCSB, he's talking about providing tutors. We're going to Westmont looking for tutors. And the tutors work in a seven-to-one ratio with students, it's not one-on-one tutoring. Students are made responsible in that tutoring situation for their own learning. There are collaborative study groups, there are writing groups, there are Socratic seminars. We're actually going to bring the guru of Socratic seminars to, and I want to thank, is Cynthia here? There's Cynthia. Dr. White is our coordinator, thank you for coming. Is our coordinator for AVID. And she's called Dennis Gray, who was, you know, I saw him a number of years ago and learned how to create a Socratic seminar. It's an incredible way to learn, and I've seen it work with students and in classrooms very, very successfully. And so, the tutors work and they learn how to do this. So, little aside, free training for these kids. When they come in to do the tutoring work, AVID trains them, six hours of training. They are certified as AVID tutors, which is a transportable certification anywhere they go. If they leave UCSB and go to UCSD, they can work in San Diego as an AVID tutor. So, kind of a neat deal for them. Fridays are binder evaluations, and you'll always know, as a teacher, you'll know the AVID student when they come in. They'll have their very organized binder, they'll have a backpack that is very organized and in order. Field trips, they go to colleges, they take college trips, they go to a lot of different places. They get kids out, kids that have never been anywhere or, you know, had that kind of exposure. Media center speakers, they'll bring a lot of speakers in, and motivational activities. And so, here are the, here are the four pieces that, they call it WICR. WICR, writing to learn and learning to write, inquiry, collaboration, and reading. And here are the four parts of it. And some of these, I stumbled over this in our secondary parent advisory, and I don't know what a couple of those things are, but I'll find out for us. So, you can see the writing piece, pre-writing, of course, drafting, responding, revising, editing, final draft. So, a good writing process is taught to these kids. Class and notebook, Cornell note-taking. So, on, they'll divide their paper into two-thirds where they will take the class notes. On the left-hand column, they'll write their notes, their reflections, with questions and a summary at the bottom. So that when they go back over their notes for the test, they have a quick summary, they don't have to go through everything. Learning logs and journals, so dialectical journals, where when they are reading, they keep notes on a right-hand column and writing reflective questions and thinking about their reading as they go through. So, just, you know, it's good study skills. Inquiry, they teach kids to ask questions. And the AVID kids unfailingly will sit in the front and the hands will go up and they will ask questions. They're taught how to ask teachers' questions. Socratic seminars, quick write discussions, critical thinking, writing questions, and open-minded, open-minded activities. And then, reading, how to read across the curriculum with all of those different kinds of pieces. Reciprocal teaching in their study groups, they'll teach each other. And collaboration with group projects, study groups, jigsaws, read-arounds, and so on, collaborative activities. AVID is implemented in nearly 2,200 schools, 36 states, 16 countries, more than that now. This was from 1999, way more than that now. And you saw the information that 95% of AVID students reported enrolling in college. And I don't have data on completing in college, our parents asked that. And I'm gonna have to ask our regional rep for that data. Four-year college-going rate in California is three times higher than the California state average from AVID students. Here's projected growth through 2010 in terms of the number of sites. We're now in 0607, so what about 2643? We're looking at projection of maybe 4,000 sites fairly soon. Here's an ethnic breakdown of AP test takers, AVID versus a national average. The orange are the AVID students, in an ethnic breakdown, the green are national. So, you can see, and there's a real strong correlation between students who take AP courses or IB courses and college-going success. Here's UC rates, AVID, California, 11.2 AVID students get into UC, 6.7 California overall. AVID high school graduation rates, AVID 98% and nationally 70%. Completion of four-year college entrance requirements, AVID students complete at a rate of 82% and nationally 36. Here's, here's a look at Santa Barbara High School District graduates completing college prep A to G courses, and this is from last year. You can see all seniors, 1,355 seniors, tot, whoops, uh-oh, go back. The total that completed A to G requirements was 905. Total white students completing A to G was 563, total Hispanic students completing A to G, 240. And you can see the total breakdowns there. We have in our district 504 seniors graduating that were Hispanic students, 748 white students. And there's the gap. And you challenged us to close that gap, and this is one of the ways that we're gonna close it. Single biggest predictor of college success is the quality and intensity of students' high school curriculum. And that's why we're not dumbing down curriculum for these kids, we're raising the bar. And that's why we're not dumbing down curriculum for these kids, we're raising the bar and giving them tools to succeed. And here's the AP. This was interesting to me. No AP, and you can see college success. Bachelor's degree in four years. One AP class, forty-five percent. Two or more, sixty-one percent completers. Here's the percent of Avid seniors taking at least one AP or an IB exam, and you can see that it's gone up. This is for Region Eight, which is three counties. It's San Luis, Kern, and Santa Barbara counties, and in California itself. Access to rigorous... Implementing Avid, and we've done it, and we're going back to it, redocking with a mothership. And it offers access to rigorous curriculum, focus on the forgotten middle, structured support, high-level tutorials. Contact with key adults, site team, focus on performance, powerful staff development, and support beyond the school site. And here are things that Avid is not. It's not an at-risk program. It's not affirmative action. It's not a school within a school. It is not for all students, and as I said, not a silver bullet, not a quick fix, it's not free, and it does not affect just a few students. Now, we're looking, over the next three to five years, to grow Avid sections. And I'd like to invite any of you who would like to take a trip to Oxnard. They started three years ago. Their sections have grown by pretty good numbers, and that's where we'd like to go. And I think with our team that included the principal from every site, a counselor who will act as a coordinator from every site, and then Avid elective teachers and Avid pathway teachers, that we're going to do this. We're going to offer our teachers year-long sessions on professional development, and Cynthia could probably tell us how many. How many sessions will we have?
Four.
Four. And four chances to meet with Ventura Avid teachers and pathway teachers, and with North Santa Barbara County Avid teachers. We have, in our region, a great regional support in Gloria McGee...
McGee.
Thank you. I can never remember the last name. Remember McGee. A wonderful lady, and so she's helping us. Susan Salsito is the Santa Barbara County Office Director for Avid, and, excuse me, Cynthia will be our district support. There we go. Questions?
Let me just invite other board members. I'm going to be looking for a time later in October to go. Nancy Harper signaled her desire to go. If others would like to... Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to...
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, I'd also like to invite you on September twenty-eighth here in the boardroom. All of our sixth-grade teachers are going to have their first Avid training. So we're starting with sixth grade this year, and every single sixth-grade teacher and the principals are being trained for two sessions. And then we'll roll out the following year with fifth grade and possibly fourth grade together. They suggest one year at a time, but we're very anxious and we want to get it going. The lower grades, so by the time the students get to junior high, they will already, of course, have their backpack and their binder all organized. They'll know Cornell notes, they'll know a lot of those instructional strategies that are excellent teaching. And in the elementary level, it will be classroom-wide, school-wide. So it's not... There's no elective. It's a little bit slightly different. And Cynthia, Dr. White saw this training and brought it back to us and told us about it, and we're, you know, connected with the trainer, and it's really, really exciting. So we'll be down as far as fourth grade with that.
What time?
We're starting at eight, eight-thirty. It's an all-day training till about three or so on Thursday, the twenty-eighth. So anytime during the day, if you want to drop in and see the sixth-grade training and see how it starts, you're more than welcome to see that, too.
Can we get a flyer or something about that to remind us?
How about if I send you an email?
That'd be great.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Harder?
Mr. Zettel, we've talked about this before, but would you share with the board how counselors are going to be brought on? Clearly, teachers were trained in San Diego, a large number of teachers. But if you're talking about students either self-identifying or being tapped to enter the program, counselors are more or less the gateway for that when we're talking about junior high schoolers and high schoolers. So would you share that?
Absolutely. We find that counselors oftentimes, as you said, open doors or keep doors closed for students. When we brought a counselor from every of our second... Every one of our secondary schools to Avid, they went through a counseling strand where they learned about Avid. They learned about the mission of Avid. They learned how they could help as a counselor to move kids into the Avid class and then begin to move kids into AP courses or into honors-level courses, A to G courses in the high schools. It's going to take a lot of work. This is culture-changing. It is not easy. There will be bumps in the road. We'll have people that... And we've already had it. Teachers that were with Avid and don't believe the board will support it forever. You know, you're coming back. How do we know that we're not just going to have the rug pulled out from under us? I'm saying things are different now. The financial requirements are not as stringent, and we have the ability to focus our people's time and money on Avid programs, which I think is critical. We're moving in one direction, and that direction is for all kids, higher levels, and, you know, really looking at your goal. And we see this as one way of doing it, not the only way, and not the only silver bullet. We need to have counselors help us to create more sections as word of Avid gets out to parents and parents start seeing kids doing well and seeing their, you know, the possibility for their own children. At the high school I was at, that's how it started, and they were not convinced that this was going to be a great program at all for their kids, of course. They didn't... A lot of them didn't fit the profile, but many did. It's grown from one section, and I believe it's four sections of kids now, one at every grade level. This is in a small high school, and parents are clamoring for more. They see their kids are supported, they see their kids are enthusiastic now. It creates a family setting if kids are looped through Avid courses. Now, you don't have to loop, you know... By looping, I mean have the same teacher for ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. But that's been very effective. So counselors, we're going to have to bring more counselors on board. We're planning already for next summer. We're going to take another counselor with us, a different counselor, and they're going to get avidized. So avidized. Probably not the best term, but whatever.
Just one more question. This came out of the secondary parents advisory meeting, and it was a question that a number of the parents asked, and I think Dr. White may be able to address it. Explain what a special circumstance might be in identifying a student for Avid. The other categories are fairly clear, but what might be... What might constitute special circumstances?
Well, I think that as the students come out of the elementary school with the Avid...
Turn it on.
It's not working. Sorry. I'm not so proficient with these. As the students come out of our elementary district and they've been through Avid training in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, they'll enter into the junior high school, and Avid will become an elective. So it's not just that we would be targeting those students that are the students who are low-income first to go to college or students in the middle. There are many students, such as special education students, five oh-four students, students that are just disorganized and need some additional support that would be an Avid student. And so we're not just looking at a special population of students and targeting a population of students. This is, as Mr. Zettel said, to avidize the schools and get those structures of support in the school for as many students as need those supports.
We just had a wonderful email. I just got it before I came to the board meeting from one of our principals at the junior high level, and it was from an Avid student to her Avid teacher. And it was... I don't know if I can share it or not, but it was just wonderful. This young lady was asking for help in learning about noun forms, and she had to take the test. And she wanted to have that, A, it was important to her. And she was asking her Avid teacher if she could come in and learn about nouns. And it was, you know, that's Avid. That's... And the student... It's not acceptable to me to get Cs. It's just not. You know? It was very touching, but it's very empowering for students. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Noel has a question, I think.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like a... If it's not a silver bullet, it sounds like a miraculous cure.
It's one.
Okay. What else?
I don't know about miraculous, it's hard work.
Okay, okay. So it's one approach.
One approach.
It's not free. I'd love to hear you talk a little bit about in detail about what it's going to cost.
This year, when we sent fifty people to the Avid conference, which we would like to do every year, maybe not fifty, maybe fewer numbers than that, it will cost us for registration and travel. And we offered a stipend to the teachers because they spent five days in San Diego.
So what was the total on that?
Cynthia, do you have a total? I don't recall. But we're really targeting, using categorical dollars because of the targeted student that it represents. We were able to obtain for every five registrations, one free from Avid, so we obtained a number of them from Avid. So that's one cost, is a professional development. The other cost for us now will be tutors. It's not a huge cost and one well worth the time, and we're working with Cal Soap right now. They will be training their tutors in Cal Soap methods of tutoring. We will come in and overlay that with Avid training, and we are going to pay the hourly rate to those tutors. And I hope we can make that work.
So, Mr. Zettel, I had to pull out the calculator, and the cost for... We had forty-eight participants. Thirty-six were a cost to us, and it was approximately $2,000 per participant at $72,000. The stipends for those thirty-six people were at $500 per person at $18,000 for the summer, so approximately $90,000 for the summer.
And that was... Oh, that was tied to money mostly? Professional development money?
I believe a combination. EIA probably should take...
Yes, it was primarily from EIA funding. EIA?
EIA.
Economic Impact Aid?
Economic Impact Aid dollars.
Yeah, no, I understand. What about the operating costs?
The operating costs are currently built into the master schedules. The additional costs will be additional sections that we will, as we have more students qualifying next year and we add sections, there will be a cost for those sections.
In what sense? Having to hire extra teachers or...
I don't believe we'll hire extra teachers. It will be an elective that will be added to the list. The students will probably then not be able to take another elective.
But if you add sections and it doesn't add to costs, then...
Well, the sections...
That sounds like a zero sum, that you have to take it from one place to put it somewhere else.
That's exactly. It's zero sum.
So that would mean other electives would be reduced?
Yes.
Okay. What about class size? Are there costs built in? Is it going to be the standard thirty-two students per class?
Standard thirty-two.
Okay. And teacher aides?
No teacher aides.
Okay. So this basically is, from junior high on, there's an elective program?
Yes. Elective support program.
Last question. Have you developed an evaluation model?
We're working with Dr. Hayden to do that.
Great.
We... Actually, Avid International supports us with evaluation. They keep... There's reports that we need to send in based on how the Avid students are doing in terms of their grades and in terms of the number of courses that, you know, they're enrolled in. There's just a wealth of data that is collected by Avid itself. We have to be certified.
I'd be very much interested in using California Standards Test performance as a criterion measure.
Great.
I guess I didn't ask the other question. You alluded to the... Do we pay Avid? Do we pay that nonprofit?
No, we do not.
Anything? It's free?
Yes.
Well, that's terrific. I had always wondered why we abandoned it in the first place and why it was replaced by REACH. And then we had a presentation here from Santa Barbara High School where they had to replace REACH by something they called a Leadership Institute. And now, does this mean that those programs are going to continue and Avid's just going to come in and compete with them? Because the whole justification for that program was pretty much along the same lines that you're talking about.
You know, I think that's what I saw, was that REACH was morphing into something that was not a good research base. It wasn't Avid. And that's why I wanted to bring that standardization of Avid back to the district, provide support and collaborative efforts for the teachers so that they would have a common curriculum, a common course, common, you know, wicker to teach to the students.
And I commend you for that because it's a program with a lot of experience and, in fact, some pretty good research behind it.
Yes.
And I just was always troubled by, we had Avid, it wasn't broken, and then somebody fixed it with REACH, and then they fixed REACH with the Leadership Institute, which, as I experienced that evening and presentation, saw as a pure ideological trip, okay? And I'm so delighted that you're getting back to a program that does have a track record.
Yes.
May I add that we saw an excellent presentation on REACH from a teacher at San Marcos High School, and...
Yes, we did.
That program is becoming Avid.
Okay. So we're not going to have REACH anymore, we're going to have Avid.
We're going to Avid. It's a name change.
In fact, she was our lead teacher who said, who took a careful look at this and said, "We need that. We need to go back to that."
Well, I think that is really commendable. That's the kind of self-scrutiny and self-criticism I think that is very important.
She's a star.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm very heartened by that.
Ms. Malikoff, a couple of questions.
Sure.
It's an elective. Is it something they would have to take every year, or could they come in and out of it? Or is it usually something you just continue with?
Students are encouraged to stay in Avid. What typically happens is that the number of sections will shrink as they get older. You wish they would stay with Avid for four years. That's what we'd encourage them to do. Actually, nine years of Avid. If they start in the fourth grade and go... Is it nine? No. Eight years? Nine years?
It just seems that it would be hard in junior high with the electives, that there are so few electives as it is with health and everything else also. That would be very difficult. I could see, once you get into high school... I'm just curious also about the block system in that it really seems like something that's standing behind these students all the time, that's always something they could go back to, get help from. But with the block system, it would mean that they're getting it half the year, is that?
Half the year. And that's an issue for me. And I know that San Marcos is looking at a different form of the block. I was there when they had a presentation from Pioneer Valley High up in Santa Maria, a brand-new high school. They had three blocks, and then top and bottom of that block were fifteen-minute periods that went for the whole year. And so you could take courses that you wished to run that full year and put it in those periods. So you'd have flexibility in your block.
Some combination, yeah.
Combination.
Yeah.
I like the idea. I don't know what San Marcos will do. But you raise good concerns, and those are issues, those are obstacles that we have to work around. It's nothing that Avid has not encountered before, and they always have good ideas, and they're very realistic about, you know, what is in the high schools and the junior highs and, you know, the workarounds, the things to... You know, it's always about supporting kids and giving kids the skills that they need.
I wonder if they show the kids this movie? It seems like it would be rather inspirational.
I don't know. Yeah. You know, when we were there, they had thirty-two hundred teachers from around the world, and they were from all over. We... Oh, my gosh. It was very inspirational. But they had three students that came up and spoke to the crowd. But they had three students that came up and spoke to the, to the crowd. It was great, you know? These are kids who had graduated, who were moving on, and, and the stories they told about what they overcame in their own personal lives was unbelievable. And it was, they attribute a lot of that to the avid support they got. And kids need that, some kids need that, as, you know, that sense of family. I call it the good gangs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zettel. Okay, we should move on to item F3, and we are about a half hour behind schedule, and we have, I think, six or seven of our consent agenda items to go back to. So hopefully, we can keep that in mind as we look at our next item, F3. Report on findings of the 2005-2006 Santa Barbara School District's monitoring visit by the California Department of Education's Categorical Monitoring Program Unit and proposed resolutions.
Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Compliance, spends a lot of time in this area and is determined to get it right in following all the rules on categorical programs. So, Mr. Gonzalez will give this report.
I, I will summarize briefly what's contained in the report and the attachments that we attached to you. I think the best way to, to give a global view of this thing is that, starting in April, concluding in June, a team of experts from the State Department came to our district, reviewed eleven categorical programs, in those eleven programs checked, examined, investigated two-hundred-and-seventy different items, and found us out of compliance in forty-six. The, our job, and those forty-six are contained in here, and I'll very quickly show some slides that'll give you further information. Our job now is, as Dr. Sarvas mentioned, to take those forty-six compliance items and become compliant. And it's going to take some action. I'm going to pinpoint a couple of things for you, but let me share with you a couple What, what we've got here is our, our Title IV programs and our Safe School programs, our TUPI programs. That's what we call S and DAT. What you're going to find is that we are found out of compliance with program implementation. And what that means is that, what we've found in our district is that we have not yet fully implemented the Too Good for Drugs program, where we have an obligation to make sure that those relevant components of this scientifically-based, research-based curriculum designed to help students stay drug-free, tobacco-free, that we fully implemented in our schools. We have until October twenty-seventh to comply with the implementation of this program. Look at the next one, Roman numeral seven dash fourteen, Program Coordination and Evaluation. What the state found is that, at this point, when they were here, we did not have a plan on how to evaluate the effectiveness of that program. With Dr. Hayden, with the assistant superintendents, and the staff, the categorical programs, we are in the process of building an evaluation program, will submit that by October twenty-seventh. Look at sedate, Roman numeral two dash four. You actually took care of that compliance this, earlier this evening. We were found out of compliance because the, we did not have a tobacco-free policy, and by the action you took tonight, it makes us into compliance. We had indicated originally we'd get into compliance on October twenty-seventh, we beat that by over a month. Persistently Dangerous Schools, Roman numeral two dash seven. At the time that the team was here, it was my belief, everyone else's belief, that we did not have a persistently dangerous policy. It turned out upon future research, thanks to, to Robin and Jan, that indeed, they had built in language about persistently dangerous schools when they put together the inter-district transfers. And so what we, there's no need to have a separate board policy. Instead, we're notifying the, the state that indeed, we have existing language in our board policies and administrative regulations. I, I think what I, I would like to share with you, and I'm not going to go through the pages that are attached to, to your report, but I would like to bring a couple of things to your attention. One of them has to do with inventory. I would share with you that it's, the last time the district undertook a complete inventory was about the year 2002. It was done in a very comprehensive manner. We were required to seek an outside vendor to conduct, to do most of the work. The problem is that we did not continue that monitoring process, i.e. the inventory process. I approached the cabinet last week with a proposal. The proposal you see before you is the result of conversations we've had with district fiscal services purchasing and categorical programs. And just very quickly, I'll outline this particular proposal. The first item on their underproposal is that we would have to take as a district very seriously the concept of inventory. It's not a, it's not an exciting nor pleasant thing to get involved with, but it's a legal requirement. When we accepted the categorical monies, we accepted the responsibility of inventory, any item that was purchased with categorical monies in the amount of five hundred dollars or more. We've neglected to keep up that activity since the year 2002. Related to that is that not only would the district have to buy into this concept, but we'd have to make sure the principals understand that when you receive the monies, you also accept the responsibility for inventory. It would require that we hire someone here at the district to coordinate and, and be that central keeper of the information. We believe that the approximate cost of that position is about forty-five thousand dollars. We would have to, under number three, we would have to contract with a vendor, an inventory vendor again, and begin to build that database correctly that hasn't been updated since the year 2002. Approximately cost, twenty-one thousand. We would have to engage in a maintenance software contract for somewhere between eight-hundred-and-fifty to a thousand dollars. The inventory vendor, the last time we did it, travel and lodging expenses for the team was about three thousand dollars, and we would have to purchase some inventory supplies for a total of five hundred. Bottom line is that to get our district compliant with inventory, and I should add, it's not just, this proposal is not just to get us compliant with inventory issues related to categorical. It would also apply for any purchases out of the general fund. So the total cost is somewhere between sixty-five thousand to seven thousand, to seventy-five thousand. Part of it would come out of categoricals, the other part would need to come out of general fund, and we're in negotiations right now with the assistant superintendents to see what monies are available to make this happen. I will share with you that we've indicated to the state that by December first, we'll have a pretty good plan in place on how to get in compliance with this particular item. Another item I'd like to bring to your attention very quickly, and I don't have a slide, has to do with physical education. I, I would like you to know that there was three areas that we were cited in. One area has to do with, the education code requires that we provide students with a minimum of four hundred minutes of PE instruction every ten days. We do that in all of our high schools except for San Marcos, and CPM visited San Marcos. We are in the process of, actually, Mr. Zettel has put together a task force that is going to take a look at the nutrition recommendations that have come before you before, but also to take a look at, what do we, how do we modify the block schedule to accommodate this requirement with the state? And so we met last week with the PE consultant from the state. She has given us tentative approval for our proposal to put this task force together, give us additional time on how to do this, and we may be coming before you to ask for a waiver from the State Board of Education so that we can continue the existing physical education program as designed at San Marcos for the remainder of this year, with a promise that within a year or two years, we would be in compliance with the requirements of the education code. The other issue in PE has to do with, we currently have a practice that if a doctor signs a note excusing me from PE, we're excused. Our CPM consultant said, "You know what, there's a problem here. Even if I'm excused from PE, there must be some physical activities that I can engage in." And so they've asked us to write administrative regulations that will, that will govern the idea. And bottom line is that what we're going to request from doctors is, "Look, you can't write a note, tell us what the, just blanket, removing the student from PE, give us the activities that the student can engage in." The third related item to PE had to do with a requirement that we provide elective PE courses at the eleventh and twelfth grade. We don't currently do that outside of, of athletics. And in some way, we're going to take a look at the idea, you folks have very clearly vindicated your support for giving PE credit for marching band, so we're going to be looking at our marching band curriculum and see how is it that these courses can be modified, or, better said, how can we incorporate the required standards of physical education into those courses? So, the last major you all talk about is, is essentially evaluation. What we were found out of compliance with is that we do not have a comprehensive way to evaluate how well our program, if our programs are making a difference, are they increasing proficiency in the standards? And that's something we're continuing to work on. So those are the three big areas that stand out from this report, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez? Can I, can we go back to that inventory?
Yes, of course.
Position that you were talking about? Is that, I have a couple of questions, but on that specific issue, is that a typical position that a school district our size would have?
The memory, the district memory about this is that we had such a position. When, when funding became very tenuous, you may recall that Dr. Caston made a very wise decision. His position and the board's position at the time is, "We're not going to let these cuts affect the school sites. Let it happen at the district first." And so a lot of positions were removed from the district, including the inventory position. And so we had an inventory position in the year 2002, we haven't had one since then.
Was that also funded in the way that you suggested with categoricals, partly categoricals, partly general fund?
That I don't have an answer for. What I do know is that because of the obligations of the categorical programs, we need to fund that position out of categorical funds. But this position, this position would also be responsible for the inventory processes of the entire district. At the current time, things that are purchased out of the general fund over five hundred dollars, we do not have a real good tracking system, inventory system for those goods, and we cannot, as a district, continue in that manner.
Because I'd suggest our financial situation hasn't improved much from the days we cut the position. I'm not arguing that we shouldn't have it, it's just, you know, we're, we're really in pretty dire straits right now, and, and I'm kind of curious what the breakdown will be of, you know, how much general fund are we talking about?
When, when we finished our conversations with the assistant superintendents and the cabinet, we'll be coming back before you. This is simply a proposal, I wanted to be very clear with you, about some of these things aren't costly, this one in particular is, and it hits us at a very difficult time. However, I also want to share with you that in accepting categorical monies, we also accept the responsibility inherent in those categorical monies, so we're kind of up against the wall. Okay?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Another question that I had going through this, and I appreciate, I somehow missed this table at the end, so thank you for that information. I may have questions later to follow up, because I had a number of questions about the individual items on this list. I was curious about, you've explained some of them. My main question, or I have a couple of smaller sub-questions, but my main question is, is this amount of violations or non-compliance, I should say, pretty typical? The percentage of, out of the two-hundred-and...
Seventy.
Seventy, there were forty-six?
Forty-six.
Are these pretty typical for a district our size?
Actually, no, we're much better than most districts our size. But I will tell you, for example, in, in all candor and honesty, is, I spoke with my counterpart up in Santa Maria, and she told me that they only had ten non-compliance items. And it's a, at the secondary level, it's, it's a pretty comparable-sized district, so, but statewide, you would find that forty-six out of two-hundred-and-seventy is pretty remarkable for a K-12 district. So our, our principals and our system principals and our superintendent, and you folks are doing a really, really good job. Those forty-six are important, though. One of the areas I didn't mention was English learners. We were especially cited in, in the elementary district for, well, I, I shouldn't quite say it that way. The way to say it is that what we found in our elementary district is that we do not have a systematic way of teaching English learners. At the secondary list, district, what we found is that not all our schools that were visited had duly constituted English learner advisory committees. And for, for the district level, you may find, you, you would have found that we were found out of non-compliance because the D-LAC has not reported to the board on the seven items that required to do. I.e., the D-LAC has reported to you, but it's not been inclusive of all those seven areas that we're responsible for.
I'm not done yet, and I'm worried that, I've got a number of questions, and I'm probably, I'm sure I'm not the only one, I don't know if this maybe needs to be continued or, or I can have a private conversation with you, but I have a couple of these other questions about assessment of private school students and things like that. Are other board members going to have questions, or do we need to? I have a few.
Actually, I had a related question, and you, you probably can't answer it tonight, but it had to do with the fact that, I mean, this is more or less a laundry list. And I can look at this list and say, wow, a program to oversee, you know, our English-language learner programs is very important to me. A persistently dangerous school board policy is not particularly important to me. And obviously, this is a non-prioritized list, although you, and the, and the action plan doesn't really get at any kind of priority attack either. And I'm wondering, you listed some of the items that you think are particularly critical, if we could come back at this in that fashion?
May I respond that the state has not given us a choice about priority? They have said all forty-six. That's the best way to put it.
No, I understand, but, but doesn't it make more sense to try and start with some of the more critical items?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Well, given Ms. Rodriguez's comment about probably wanting to come back to this item, and given the fact that we have a number of items from our consent agenda that we're going to still need to go over, I'm going to suggest that maybe we take about another three or four minutes on this item, and then request that it be brought back to us, because I have, I have some questions, I'm sure other board members have questions as well.
Well, I'll be done for now and, and take it up later with the rest of my questions.
Okay. Does anybody have questions that are burning for right now?
Yeah, I, this is kind of a basic question. They did not, did they or did they not visit every school?
They did not visit every school.
Which schools did they visit?
They did visit McKinley, they did visit La Combra, and they did visit Dos Pueblos, and they... And they reviewed the physical education program at San Marcos. And that's standard operating procedure. The team will never visit all the schools within one district.
That's exactly, I mean, I was aware of that list, but I thought it was very important that the public understand that. In other words, they sample.
Correct.
Okay. How long has it been since they've done this, the prior time?
A comprehensive review like the one we had four years ago. However...
Four years ago.
Right. However, our English learner programs have been reviewed almost annually with the inception of the comité. It's no longer called the comité process, but our English learners programs were being evaluated annually.
Okay. And when will be the next comprehensive?
We have been led to believe that they will not be back for another four years. However, what they have is the ability to come unannounced to see our progress. And to that extent, an example of that is that this Friday, we're meeting with our consultants with our English learners programs, and we're going to be taking a look at what do we need to do to get in compliance?
That's, let me try to pursue my point. In other words, the schools that were not examined this time will have at least eight years without having been examined systematically and comprehensively. Is that right?
Let's see. If you're asking, when will all the schools be visited?
No, no, not asking that. A school that was not examined this time could, may have been examined four years ago. May, right? And may be examined four years hence. That would be eight years minimum. May not be, might be another four years. In other words, this system samples and allows, in fact, logically, it is inherent in the system, that a school can go for many, many years without having been reviewed.
By the State Department.
That's right. And I bring this up because I looked at, as you know, did a pretty comprehensive review on my own of Santa Barbara High School. And I found many things that were questionable, including inventory questions. That's why I perked my ears up when you talked about inventory. For example, 50 new computers bought in '04, '05, which don't show up on any of the required inventory lists. And now it means that that particular school will not be examined again for four more years. And I find that, well, I understand it, because they would have to, you know, multiply their bureaucracy by some very large number to be able to come down and do as much. But I understand also that that puts, that under the new system of CPM, which stands for Compliance...
Categorical Program Monitoring.
Categorical Program Monitoring.
Okay.
That we have...
I'm sorry.
Yes, may I please finish, Madam President?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we have used up the amount of time that we were going to set aside. So if you could finish up with this, and then we'll bring this back to the next meeting.
Yeah, I really, just give me a little benefit of the doubt, I understand the time That we then, under CPM, are going to have to be responsible for self-monitoring.
Correct.
Okay. What are we doing about building a system for self-monitoring?
We are in the process of developing that system right now. Since these visits, there are a number of purchases that the schools have submitted to us that have been stopped, even... ...this morning, we are no longer permitting schools to spend monies that are not in compliance with the regulations of feds and states regarding these programs. In addition, you're going to find when the single plans for student achievement are brought to you, that they are now compliant with the requirements of these categorical programs. Dr. Noel is very succinct in pointing out that the state has made the district responsible for monthly monitoring of these programs, not as it was in the past.
Well, this gets me back to a number of things, and I would hope that we have ample time to discuss this. Perhaps it could be put on an agenda for an earlier hour in the evening.
Well, unfortunately, it wasn't an earlier hour. We just didn't get to it until late. But we can try and put it earlier in the agenda. I'm sorry, I had hoped that in our five, four or five minutes, that each of us would get a chance to maybe ask one question. But we'll, I'll leave my question, I had, I'll ask you one of the questions that I wanted to ask individually. So we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will bring this back. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, so that brings us to the conclusion of our conference agenda. We will go back to our consent agenda and take each of these items. I'm hoping that, I don't know if any of these are particularly long. I'm hoping that we won't take an extremely long amount of time on each one. And we'll start with number one, approval of staff travel, out-of-state travel under expense in excess of $500, dated September 12, 2006.
I asked that to be pulled, perhaps someone else did also?
I just wanted to understand what is about $6,000 for Research and Technology Director and Programmers? A good little explanation of what that's about? The travel.
Dr. Hayden, could you address that Eagle Software Users Conference?
Hello, yes. Was that out-of-state? It's not out-of-state, it's in-state.
Over $500.
Oh, okay.
It's over $500.
We're changing over to ARI's Student Information System this year. You know that, right? And this is a conference in Sacramento, and it's a conference in which we're going to get a lot of extra information and training on this whole process of transferring over to ARI's software.
So you haven't gone yet?
No.
Well, this is nice to have an expenditure come before us, not after the fact. Thank you, thank you.
Move, okay, yep. Are you done with that one?
I'm done.
Move to approve item D1.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. We're on to item D2, approval of agreement between Santa Barbara School District Child Development Program, Las Flores Children's Center, and the Family Service Agency at Santa Barbara for, I'm sorry, of Santa Barbara, for services of a healthy start advocate for 2006, 2007 school year. Dr. Noel, I think you were the one who...
I simply wanted to know, it says it's come, the money comes from the Child Development General Child Care Fund. That's money that comes from the state of California? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Move to approve item D2.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hey, motion carries 5-0. We're on to item D3, approval of Assembly Bill 430 Administrator Training Program, Local Education Agency Contract for Services between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara County Education Office.
I think both Nancy and I pulled this one. My question had to do with, and probably one of you can answer the question about the training, as far as I, I was reading through the material, it looked like one teacher in, I was a little confused on the numbers, and I was wondering if you could put into context how many, what's our vision for the district implementation of this in the long run? And exactly who is it for, as far as prospective administrators versus existing administrators?
Okay, this is actually for existing administrators only sitting, current administrators can be a part of this program. I mean, you can pay on your own if you want to. And we actually have one of our child development directors, Ron Zekker, is going to go through and have the training. This is actually not correct, because we have one extra since, and I'm kind of glad someone pulled it, because Amy Alzina is the one principal in the elementary district that fits into this category, and David Meister in the Santa Barbara district is the vice principal. So there should be a, on one of the pages where it has one for elementary, it should be one principal and one vice principal. This is, as the memo says, it's the AB-75 Principals Training that the county office put together. And so at this point, we're just, we have a few stragglers that haven't had that training yet. It's an excellent training, all of our principals go through it, and they also receive their Tier Two credential with it. So it's the second half of their professional credential for being administrator.
But was the vision for AB-75 that they just do it, what's the timeframe? Is it once, once every five years?
No, this is, this is actually a level. You have to, you do it once. We, most of us here, went ahead and did it, the 24 units at a university, you get, you know, get your master's off and with it. This was a wonderful plan or program through the state to really bring all of the existing principals up to a level where standard-based practice was understood clearly in data use. And so then it became also a Tier Two option, where you could get your second tier of your credential. So long-term, we, as long as the funding's there through the state, the Gates Foundation, as you can see, backed out as far as that extra thousand. So, you know, that's a minimal. The whole thing is very minimal for what you're getting. And it's good training, it gets everybody up to speed. So we will continue, as long as it's offered, to have all of our administrators go through the training and support, I mean, we don't really support it, the state does.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
I had...
All those in favor say, oh, sorry, did you want to address the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a small point, I was, I got confused, it said financial impact none to the district. And back here on page four, it says the district is responsible for $1,000 differences.
What, actually, the contract that Santa Barbara County Education Office put together is that the district's responsible, but we have agreed, and our administrators that are taking it know that they will be paying personally that $1,000.
All right, now, thank you, that helps, I didn't understand that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, on to item D4, approval of supplemental education services, SES provider contracts.
I think I was one of several board members who pulled it, and here's my question. We're approving additional contracts for SES providers, but we have no information on how SES providers who we've already contracted with performed last year. And do we have any kind of plan in place for evaluating the performance of the providers by examining students' test scores, for instance? Or I'm sure people can think of other measures to look at as we, you know, sort of willy-nilly approve contracts. I think that we should have some feedback on the contractors that we're dealing with.
Can I piggyback on that question? Because I had a question about what happens to the people that we approved contracts with last year. Are those contracts finished now? Or do we still have those contracts with people?
Dr. White, could you address that first? Thank you.
Annually, it's an annual contract, and the contracts last year ended on June 30. And so these would be new contracts. Four are returning, and six are new from the state list.
How many of these contractors, I see Huntington Systems, how many were on the same list last year?
Four of them were on our list last year. Professional Tutors of America, Huntington, Skylern Digital, and Smart Kids Tutoring.
And did we have clients with every one of those?
Yes, we did have clients with every one of those contracts.
I have a quick question about, there were, at least one of the ones on the list last year did not have in the contract that they had bilingual tutors. And I was looking quickly through here to see if that was something that we were requiring or that it was included. I couldn't find it. Is that a minimal requirement of all of the tutors to be able to offer that?
I don't think it was, I'm sorry, I don't think it was bilingual tutors. It was the ability of the tutoring group to communicate with Spanish-speaking parents. Students are instructed in English.
Problem is that the state approves them. We have, unless that's changed, we have no say whatsoever. Has that changed, or that's still the same?
I thought we added language last time.
Well, don't we have a choice of who, with whom we contract?
No, we do not have a choice.
None whatsoever.
The state approves the contracts.
But in spite of that, if we had, if we had data to back up results from individual providers, it would afford parents some guidance. Even if we have to provide the contracts, we could provide the data that would...
I think that's a terrific idea. The parents need to know this, but they, but we don't get to veto any of the vendors.
Okay. All right, do we have a...
I'll move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we answer the question about evaluation?
Yes, we're going to be doing that evaluation. We got the data this week, and so we'll be doing that as soon as we can.
Yeah. A number of other things to think about now.
And we have single plans coming up, and there's significant data work in putting together those reports as well.
Second.
I think I have a motion on the floor.
Okay, motion to approve, been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Item D5, approval of recommended personnel action items dated September 12, 2006.
I was one who wanted to pull that.
Okay.
I'm looking at the DeLonga Henderson.
Which page is it?
LLC, that's on the back of the first page, under consultants. $2,850, La Colina Guest Speaker Writing In-Service. And I guess I wanted to know a little bit more about what that program is, and especially what kind of commitment we have there with them. And finally, what kind of evaluation we plan.
I should actually have had David here to answer that, Mr. Ortiz. I just was there speaking to him about this today. The consultant came and gave an in-service to the English staff regarding writing process and regarding rubrics that they could be using for writing across all of the English courses. They wanted to couple that with a Jane Schaefer workshop, and Jane Schaefer is someone I'm very familiar with, as someone in California who, well, actually, a number of states. But she teaches teachers how to use a writing process with students, and it's a very successful process. So the next person is going to be Jane Schaefer. And I spoke to David about, you know, supporting Jane Schaefer coming and opening it more to, you know, to more of our district schools, rather than just La Colina. This is something that La Colina decided on and went ahead with, and they paid for it out of their dollars.
And do they plan to evaluate this in any way?
I don't know that. I would hope so.
I would too. Thank you.
Probably going to use the STAR test results for evaluating it.
That'd be nice, wouldn't it?
I'd like to see something a little further, and that is the implement, full implementation, if that's where they've decided to go of the program. So often, we have people that come in and do professional development, and then what do we see from it? Very little implementation to a lot of implementation, but very spotty. And I'd like to know that, too.
Gets back to, Mr. Gonzalez is gone, but that gets back to one of the items in the CPM monitoring reports that we're not, we're not really systematically assessing the payoff we get from our professional development.
Right. I agree.
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay. Motion carries 4-0-1. Item, oh, item D9, approval of purchase order report for the period August 15, 2006 through September 5, 2006.
I asked that to be pulled. I'm just a little confused. The second table says elementary and secondary instruction. I understand the English EL achieve, systematic ELD that we've had explained to us, but then I don't understand the postage reserve account under elementary and secondary instruction. I don't understand mandate claim preparation in the business office being grouped under that. Maybe it's arbitrary, but it would help me to understand that a little better.
So which ones are you asking about specifically?
Well, particularly the US Postal Service Reserve Account, $25,000 for postage. I'm not questioning that we need $25,000 for postage, that would be another discussion, but simply what, I don't quite understand why it's in... but simply what, I don't quite understand why it's in this table. Similarly, the School Innovations and Advocacy, the Mandate Claim Preparation, Business Office, Secondary General Fund. I just don't understand what those are doing in a table that talks about instruction.
I don't know.
Dr. Sarvis, I think the United States Postal Service is our prepaying of postage for our postage machines. I believe that is what that item is consisting of.
The reason I'm asking is fairly obvious. If this is funded out of categorical funds, then something, postage doesn't necessarily count for instruction, and I'm trying to understand whether those issues arise here.
Postage is general.
This is general fund. Okay, okay. And the same thing with this mandate, what is mandate claim prep business office?
That's the second from the bottom, the School-
Bob, can you help us with that one?
-Innovations and Advocacy. It's probably for mandated claims.
Well, obviously, oh, here we are.
That's the company that helps us prepare the claims and comes in and processes the claims and submits them to the state, so that we can get reimbursed should the state controller ever decide to release the funds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf.
By the way, we're also reimbursed for their work. In other words, we're reimbursed for the work in collecting mandated claims as well.
Good. I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Item, whoops, I'm sorry, item D10, approval of agreement to provide school lunches to Montecito Union School District.
And this is mine, last one. I was curious as to how this matched with what we voted on last, the end of June, I believe, in the lunches at Montecito Union. And if I remember, it was 350 we approved. Is that right? We approved?
We approved a minimum of a 50% increase. Mr. Hetjung can answer that, though.
You can talk to us about that.
I think this represents the 50, 50 cent increase. In addition to that, Montecito has notified us that they will want to spend the extra 25 cents for the fresh fruit. So, we will be billing them 75 cents more than last year, 50 cents for the increase, and 25 cents for the fresh fruit.
So, they have a 375. If I remember, the chart said that we would be collecting 375 from them, and then it showed how much money we would, we would get, would add to our additional funds, we would add to our nutritional program. And I was just wondering whether that would still be the same.
Double-check the figures before I ask Dr. Sarvis to sign the contract to make sure that it corresponds exactly with what the increases were that the board passed.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to coming events. I think we've covered most of the coming events in the superintendent report. Okay, board comments, future agenda items. We have a list here. We have September 19, a special board meeting for a report on year-end un-audited actuals. September 22, board workshop on the status of special education at 2:00 p.m. And, I'm sorry, our meeting on September 19 starts at 6:00. And we are in the process of scheduling school's single-plan presentations for late October or early November. I think we've had some discussion about maybe scheduling those after the election, although I'm not sure if that's going to be possible. So, I think we're still working on trying to schedule that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess that brings us to the end of our meeting. The meeting is adjourned.